Chuck, Fred Russo.
Hey Fred.
Welcome back.
Well, thank you and thanks so much for stepping in. Really appreciate it. And I hear it went excellent.
Oh, that's your day.
That's right.
It's always better when you're there though. Okay, let's see. This we don't need. Agenda. For this. Agenda. Page thirty.
I have seven o'clock, so why don't we go ahead and get started? We'll call this meeting at the Branford Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It is Thursday, October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. I have seven P M. We'll start by introducing members of the commission and staff. Commission member Joe Chadwick. Joe, are you here?
Joe Chadwick is present.
Thank you, Joe. Commission member Fred Russo. Fred, are you here?
Fred Russo is present.
Commission member Joe Vayuso. Joe, are you here?
Are we recording?
Recording in progress.
Thank you.
Okay, just checking. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry.
So, uh, thank you. Thank you, Michelle. So the meetings, we just started the meeting. We haven't done anything substantive. We're introducing members. Joe Vayuso, Joe, are you here?
Joe Vayuso is here.
Thank you, Joe. Marcy Pelosi. Marcy, are you here?
Marcy Pelosi is here.
Sharon, Sharon Hutner, are you here?
Sharon Hutner is here.
Thank you, Sharon. And our staff this evening is our town planner, McKeel Whackers. McKeel, you're here?
Here.
And our assistant planner, Dan Robinson. Dan, are you here?
Here.
Thanks, Dan. And our clerk recording secretary is Michelle Martin. And I'm Chuck Anders, Chair. I'll start by asking our secretary to read the notice of public hearing.
Legal notice, Town of Branford. The Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Branford, Connecticut hereby gives notice of public hearings to be held on Thursday, October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven P M. by remote technology to consider the applications listed below. Information regarding how to participate in the public hearings will be provided on the commission's meeting agenda that will be posted on the town's website at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. Application twenty-five dash eight point three zoning text amendments, sections two point two, six point eight C, nine point six K, nine point six L. McKeel Whackers, Director of Planning and Zoning, applicant. Application twenty-five dash eight point four zoning regulation application revisions to the landscaping regulations, section six point three. McKeel Whackers, Director of Planning and Zoning, applicant. Application number twenty-five dash nine point four special modifications to the parking requirements allowed under section six point five point one, in parentheses, one, located at five thirty dash five fifty Main Street. Spec exception modification to P Z number ten dash five point four to switch the location of required parking from four forty-seven to four seventy-one Main Street to five thirty to five fifty Main Street. Attorney James Perito, agent for applicant. Forty-four dash four seventy-one Main Street LLC, five twenty-nine dash five thirty-one Main Street LLC, five thirty dash five fifty Main Street LLC owners. Application number twenty-five dash nine point six special exception for multifamily residents located at sixty-seven Cedar Street. Town Edwards Architect and Applicant, John J. Pinzella, owner. At said hearings, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies are on file in the Planning and Zoning Commission's office at the Planning and Zoning Department, ten nineteen Main Street, Branford, Connecticut, oh six four oh five. Communications may be sent to the above address or to planning and zoning at branford-ct.gov. Branford Planning and Zoning Commission, see Andres, Chairperson.
Doc, give me a... Oops.
Uh, thank you, Fred. Chuck Anders, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Uh, we'll follow our normal format for public hearings, which is the applicant goes first, makes his presentation, uh, explains the proposal. After that, we turn it over to the commission and staff. Typically here, a summary of a staff report, questions and comments from commission members. At that point, we open it up to the public and I'll ask, uh, McKeel or Dan to explain the process for that. We ask that you state your name and address for the record, make your comments. After the public comment, we allow the applicant to respond to any of the public comment. And there may be additional questions and comments from the commission. We may or may not close a public hearing depending on how it goes. I should note that on our agenda this evening, it's, it's probably going to be a decent, uh, length of time simply for items number two or three, which are a series of zoning amendments that are in the process that, that have been proposed, that we're going to be going through. And I know there's been some, particularly on the landscaping component, there's a lot of public comment on that. So what I'm saying that if, if you're on later after that on the agenda, we're going to go through our agenda. You may want to, you know, we'd love to have you listen to us, but you can tune out and then check back in later because we are following the normal, uh, sequence of our agenda. And I believe McKeel posted a link to that in the chat if you want to see where things are. So with that, what we'll do is McKeel or Dan, can one of you just explain the process for, uh, public or applicant participation?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So quickly, if you wish to speak and you're using a computer with a microphone, uh, click Raise Your Hand in the participant window. If you're using a phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand and we will call on you when, um, uh, we wish you to participate. Uh, the dial-in information is all listed on the agenda, so if you need the phone number, you can find it there. If you don't wish to speak, you may submit comments using the chat feature. We will monitor it the best we can, uh, but speaking is preferred. And as the Chair indicated, please state your name and your address. Um, as a reminder, um, uh, if you are only playing on viewing, um, you are not required to have your real name and, um, with your window on, on the screen, but it is, uh, preferred that we know who attends. All right, Chair, that's, uh, the instructions.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you, McKeel. With that, we'll turn to our first item, which is Teddy Store LLC, one sixty-five, one ninety-five Main Street. This is in a, uh, a special exception for an apartment over a convenience store at one sixty-five, one ninety-five Main Street. Is applicant ready to proceed? Then, uh...
You can unmute yourself.
Okay, is that better?
We hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, yeah, this is just a follow-up from the meeting, I believe, last week. I attended water pollution a couple of days ago and they approved everything, so it's pretty much the same as what I was asking for about a week ago.
Thank you. Uh, any, any further comments from the applicant?
Nope, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, with that, we'll turn it over to staff. Any further comments from staff?
I will share my staff comments, so, um, uh, because they have changed since the last meeting. Um, so this applicant is to allow a special exception caretaker's quarters above an existing retail establishment. Um, the, uh, upper stories were actually constructed in the eighties, uh, over a one-story building for offices for the retail use. Um, the applicant has recently purchased the property and, and they're looking to reuse that, um, for a residence as a caretaker's quarters. Um, in reviewing, uh, the bulk requirements, it, it meets all the bulk requirements. Um, with the exception of the impervious, pervious surface ratio, uh, the lot has been used for automotive uses and retail establishment for, uh, well over forty years and, um, uh, the paving that exists today is, is essentially remained unchanged. Um, so it's existing non-conforming and pervious surface. Uh, looking through the, the standards, um, the, uh, the site does, um, require twenty-two parking spaces based on the uses that are currently there, um, but the site only can accommodate sixteen, um, as was demonstrated in application before planning and zoning a few years ago. Um, uh, but that is much more in compliance now with converting the office to residential. They are only non-conforming by one space, um, with this change of use if it's approved. Because there's no construction, um, there's little that we're evaluating for, um, it determine if it's compliant, uh, the site is existing non-conforming. Um, but welcome to hear the commission's comments on what might need to take a look at in addition. Um, I pulled the site plan from, uh, the, the, the change of use for convenience store in the main building, um, just to show how the parking layout can be accommodated and how it came to the, the more compliant parking, uh, scenario that we are considering. Review by other departments, um, fire and building, uh, since this is going to be a change of use, they're going to need, um, construction drawings, uh, in order to complete their review, but they'll do that, um, if, if planning and zoning approves this and the applicant will be required to pull a building permit. Uh, the town engineer has confirmed that, um, the applicant did go to W P C A and they have, uh, have approval for a change of use, um, for the sewer connection. Um, it does, uh, meet all many of the special exception criteria and that is located in a zoned area that, that allows for more density, has existing facilities, uh, infrastructure and infrastructure to support it. Um, uh, if we approve this, um, I put together a draft finding that, you know, this, the commission will find based on testimony and application materials that the proposed use of the property is consistent with the best special exception criteria. Um, there are three conditions. The first is that they comply with all departmental comments. Um, uh, we have our traditional standard lighting requirements to ensure that all lighting is, is appropriately, um, cut off and, uh, dark skies compliant. And then finally, since it is a residential, it functions very much like an accessory apartment, uh, looking to incorporate our, our standard accessory apartment, uh, deed restrictions, where if it is no longer, if it is enabled to be used as a caretaker supporters, um, or the property owner, that, um, we, we allow it to be used as a affordable rental, um, eligible under eight thirty G, um, would help from a zoning enforcement standpoint and, uh, just, uh, and I think it's consistent with other policies that the commission has, um, implemented, uh, on a number of different similar uses. With that, I will stop sharing and happy to answer any questions.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you, McKeel. Questions or comments for McKeel or the applicant by commission members? Very none, then let's open it up to the public. Do any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Do you see anyone? Any member of the public wish to comment?
I do not see any raised hands.
Okay. Um, are there any further comments from the applicant?
No, thank you very much for hearing me.
Are there any further comments from, uh, the commission members or staff? Hearing none, then I think we can close this matter as a public hearing, be able to bring this up, uh, later on in the meeting. Thank you. So with that, we'll turn to item number two. Um, and items number two and three are text amendments to the regulations. And in my, my understanding is, uh, actually item number two, there's, I believe there's four text amendments. Um, and item number three, there's one, it's the landscaping one. And my, my general understanding here is, is that the, uh, McKeel, uh, wanted to get the ball rolling on these things and, uh, you know, coming in and to help make the process more efficient has proposed these, but with the understanding that there's, there may be significant public comment. And the thought was that this evening, what we would do is have McKeel give a, a general overview, sort of skeleton view of, of what this is about, get some comments both from commission members and the public, this is going to be on all the regulations, and we'll continue all of these to see where this goes. McKeel, did I get that right? Did I?
Yeah, that's accurate.
Okay. So with that, um, why don't we start with the, uh, again, number two, which is a series of four text amendments? I, I don't know, do we, do we, we should probably do them individually, don't you think? Or, or what do you think, uh, McKeel and Dan?
Um, yeah, I think we can go through that. Uh, I'm happy to go through it individually, uh, do a very quick summary. Uh, the intent here tonight is to really collect feedback from the public in this public hearing process. And, uh, based on that feedback, we'll see what, if anything, um, needs to be considered for possible, um, revisions for any final consideration at maybe the next meeting. Um, I foresee the next meeting might be a little, much later on the, lighter agenda. Um, so they go, that'll give us some, an opportunity to dig deeper into it with the commission, but I will share my screen real quick, very quickly. All right, actually, I'll go through the, Dan, do you have your, um, your comments?
Yeah, I do.
Why don't you just share real quick? So on just the first page, so people understand what, what zoning text amendments I'm going to speak to. Uh, the first one is a, just a change in the definitions to, um, clarify building height and, um, currently building height is, is established by every district by a set number of feet above grade. Um, as Branford is, is coming to deal with climate change and to ensure that property owners can still, um, you know, maintain and protect and then do appropriate steps, uh, with, with their properties, we want to ensure that they do not have any undue burdens in, in, essentially protecting their property. So we're looking to, um, not just have the, the meet average grade, um, be the point where you start measuring height, um, but in some cases where it's, where there's flood, flood zones, um, in effect, using the flood elevation as the, uh, the point where you start measuring height. Uh, this one is already, we've had a number of different internal conversations among departments. Um, and we are looking at possible changes in terms of, um, not piggybacking what the district, uh, height requirement is, which could be thirty-five feet or forty feet, depending on the district, uh, but maybe setting some more, um, a, a less stringent, uh, threshold and keep it to a number of stories that we will allow above, uh, the flood elevation. Um, but that will be, I'd be willing to hear comments from the public on that. So, uh, that's the summary of that. And, uh, Chair, do you want to open up to comments on that?
Sure. Why don't we go ahead? It probably makes sense to do this into, you know, to go sequentially. Um, uh, just, I'll, I'll start with comments from the commission. And I did, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and start. The, the, the building height issue, I, I saw the town engineers' comments and, and I thought that was, that was interesting, that this, you know, a seemingly, you know, change in definition could have a major impact in the sense that it could allow, uh, larger heights, you know, fi, an additional five to ten feet. And my sense is that, and it's only in FEMA areas where you're talking about, um, you know, basically FEMA or floodplain areas, but those are, those are by the water, those are where you have small lots, those are where height makes a difference, where, where people, you know, can complain that my views are, are being affected and so forth. So it's something that I had the sense that I'd like to get a better, you know, sense of, of any public impact. I don't, I don't want to sneak this in if, if we're going to do that. And I saw that the town engineers' comment, why not just have it a story limit? That, that kind of made some sense too. So, um, uh, I, I could see that because, you know, I, I can see that's where, you know, when, when people, you know, there could be teardowns or whatever and, 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 you know, you could have something a lot, a lot higher than the neighbors or somebody's view gets, gets obstructed. I'm curious, this isn't, you know, this isn't that new, this FEMA stuff, uh, has been going on for a while. And I'm also curious as to how many variances have been sought because of this? Have there been FEMA-related variances, you know, considered by our Z B A? And, and what do they do? Do they grant them the H I M? But, you know, I'm, I'm, I kind of, you know, th, those are sort of the questions that I had, uh, in, in exploring that. So I'll, I'll stop and see, are there other commission members who have questions or comments about the proposed change in definition for building height?
Uh, Chuck, Fred Russo?
Fred.
I like to, uh, kind of piggyback on what you were saying about the heights. Um, one, uh, my recollections was that I, I was under the impression that height was originally determined because of, of, uh, fire, uh, equipment being able to get up to a particular height. I thought thirty-five was the limit and I don't know what your equipment does, maybe it can go fifty feet today, but I always thought that's why we had a limit of thirty-five feet. Uh, that was one concern, you know, how the fire department would consider, uh, heights much higher because especially those that are in a, in a floodplain because, uh, they might be elevated ten or twelve feet to begin with. The other thing is, you know, you mentioned about how many stories a building could be, but I, I'm thinking to myself, what is a story? Is it eight foot? Is it ten foot? Is it twelve foot? If I had a house that was facing Long Island Sound, I would want a very high ceiling with a lot of glass. So, you know, that, the, the store, just saying how many stories isn't enough. I, I would almost think that you might have to define what, you know, there might be a range of what a story represents, but, you know, someone could have a, a grand room that has a, a fourteen-foot ceiling and then two ten-footers above that. And, you know, what happens is the houses beside being elevated, and I'm not picking out houses on the water, I'm just going to be any house for that matter, but, you know, a house that's already going to be elevated, plus without defining the height of a story might make it very difficult. You're going to have different houses with the same number of stories, but different heights. So it was just something that crossed my mind as we were talking about, uh, the, the height of a house and the number of stories. Maybe the, the, the word story needs to be defined to, to within a certain limit too. And if, if, if someone wants to go more than that, then they would come, I guess, before the commission and ask for some kind of an exception, but that, that was just my thoughts about height and stories of, of buildings.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thanks, Fred. All right, good points. Other commission members have comments or questions? Sharon?
Um, Sharon Hutner here. I, um, agree with, um, what you were saying, Chuck, about how this change in definition might affect the neighbors, um, in various local locales in town. And, um, I've seen, I walk along the water, um, very often and I've seen new construction, um, with, um, houses that have just seemed to me are too tall for the regulations, but obviously have been approved. So I would think that we could take a closer look at this. And I also agree with Fred. I, I don't understand what a story limit would mean and how that could be calculated. So I just think we need to take a closer look at this.
Thanks, Sharon. Other comments from anyone? Commission members?
I'll chime in on, it's Marcy. I'll chime in on the story example. You know, back in the forties or fifties, room heights were seven foot six. Joe can, you know, can obviously attest to this. And over time, as rooms get bigger, there's a need to increase the floor height and they could be anywhere from eleven, twelve feet, or even if there's a cathedral's ceiling higher, you know? Um, and it's, it's a function of space around it. And I think that the same logic, whether you're talking about the interior feel of a room in proportion has to apply to the exterior. And in these shore areas where you're in smaller lots that predated zoning, you know, you've got this added impact of the flood restriction, which I certainly appreciate, but, you know, compounding the height, you know, the height example, you know, you know, it's kind of increasing density without increasing, you know, users necessarily. And, you know, I just think that that's an important consideration in terms of the, the form and character of the town in terms of the, the way an neighborhood feels. And, you know, it's just, you know, it's the same thing. I know I was reading ahead on some comments about a lot split. And, you know, it's like every time you make a parcel smaller, if you put a bigger house on it, you know, that changes the feel of a big parcel with, you know, a fourteen-hundred square foot cape, you know, you're going to get a completely different proportion. And I think that's some contextual study needs to be applied. It's very hard to sort of blanket these things in, in one regulation, which, you know, I, I know that's the nature of the regulations, but, you know, I think that's the challenge that we're trying to find the happy medium with.
Thanks, Marcy. Other comments from commission members?
Yeah, I guess I might as well chip in on this. Um, it, it's, it's kind of a slippery slope to say, uh, we're going to just add the story, add the, uh, feet over the, um, the footage, over the floodplain. Um, there are, there's an opportunity to get a very tall building. Um, there is also the opportunity to get fairly wobbly buildings. They'll, they'll have to be certainly engineered to a much greater degree than they may already be engineered, um, just to resist overturning forces. Um, the, the, um, other route that would be taken there is, well, maybe the lots are too small, so we're going to have to start aggregating lots and building, um, bigger houses to make up for that, that business. And it's, 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 we're in just sort of an area of, of almost, um, backing into a form-based zoning that is going to be completely out of character. So personally, I'm not opposed to skinny tall houses. Um, yes, we need to have a definition of story height, um, or just simply a vertical height that's based on something rational and something that's derivable. Um, you know, there, there is a floor-to-floor problem, there is a roof structure problem. Um, we could be forcing this into a situation where, um, we have a bunch of flat roof buildings just to get, um, the maximum number of stories within a certain limited, a certain limited height. Um, so I, I, I don't know where the outfall from this is going to come. And I'm not sure that anything I have just said is any different than leaving this, the, the height where it is and not, not, not mitigating that for the, um, um, flood, flood elevation. So it's, it's, if we're going to make a change, we should be making a change with some study towards what we feel the character of the town is and how this might be driving the character of the town on the shorefront. Um, you know, we, we certainly don't want it to look like, you know, you know, someplace in New Jersey or Cape May, but, um, we've, we've certainly have that potential to drive it in that direction.
Any comments?
Who is attracted to? You, you went out for a minute.
Oops. Did we lose Joe?
Is it?
Yeah. Joe, Joe, I just, we're just making rounds. Did you have any comments on this, on this regulation? I just... Whoops.
Yeah, you hung up.
Oops, there you are.
I, I think I'm unmuted now.
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, well, all of you brought up all good points and, uh, all concerning points, but, uh, I guess you want to get, you have to define a story and, uh, a height and all you, and a story could be like Fred said and Joe said, uh, it can be eight feet, it could go up to ten or twelve or thirteen feet. So, uh, and Joe Chadwick said, uh, mentioned, uh, a good point about, uh, about height, the heights in, in us, in these small little lots. And, uh, so I think we have, we have to consider that, uh, consider a lot of the heights in, in these, uh, small lot, uh, areas and, and he brought up a good point about a flat roof, just to get an extra floor in there. Uh, that could create another problem with, uh, with snow load. So I, uh, to me, I think... to me, I think the height should be be held to a, to a reasonable height. And I know you have to start, the starting point is where, is what I think you're trying to change and, and, and identify. And from that point on, I don't think we should try to raise the height because we're already gonna be raising the height because the starting point is gonna be different in most cases. So I think we have to really think hard, long and hard, because all yous, all the comments that were made were very well, well-taken in my, in my point of view. Thank you.
The public, see if the public has any comments on this specific regulation. Does any member of the public wish to comment on the proposal to modify the definition of building height for those buildings in flood, floodplains, I believe?
I actually do. I, I will enter them into chat to be, to be more clear.
Okay, can you just identify yourself for the record, please?
I will with my chat.
Okay. It's, yeah, we, then we gotta remember to print it out and put it in the record. It's, it's, it's sometimes easier if, you know, because you're on the record if you actually see it and people can't always see it otherwise, but that'll work.
I guess I was just, so my, my hesitation was that I was afraid that I have too many parts to the question. So, but, but my name is Carl Liasse. I'm with sixteen Old Poson Road in Branford, and I apologize because I missed the very beginning as to what exactly is being proposed and by whom? Is that, like, who's making the recommendation of the change?
Sure. The, the quick summary and, and what you could always do is send an email, because we're continuing the public hearing. If you want to do it, that, that may be easier. This is a proposed amendment to the definition of building height that would only for those buildings in floodplains, which are, you know, are water, that would basically measure the height from the, the, the floor level, the required floor level. Basically, it could potentially allow higher buildings in, in areas. You have to elevate buildings where the first floor is above the water line, so it won't get flooded. And so that, you, you sort of have to put them up. And the thought was, well, okay, that, you're sort of penalized. And therefore, you know, since, since you have to push them up anyway, should we allow, should we measure the height from that point as opposed to the, the, the original grade of the, of the land? So anyway, that, that was the issue and it, it's because of FEMA stuff. So, yeah.
Okay. So what is the, what is, you know, in, in terms of looking at area, other area coastal towns, what are they doing in similar situations? What is the recommendation of FEMA on coastal areas? And the impact, you know, when, when you're getting a surge of wind and water and now you have a larger building taking that, that's just gonna get sheer force at it? And then what's the recommendation of the insurance industry would be my questions?
Thank, thank you. Those, those are good questions.
I mean, I will say that I will go on the record, being a planner of over, over twenty years, almost thirty years, and working with FEMA and other disasters. I was strongly opposed to allowing it to be calculated based on your raised level. There is a reason for raising the level, and it's not punitive. It is a case of where you built your house and the environment. And I, I, so I, I will go on the record as saying I strongly oppose the change.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And other members of the public, we see, I think we see a raised hand, a couple?
Well, I can't raise my hand because my system doesn't allow that. Steve Kudrow? My comment on this would be, I think that it should be handled on a case-by-case basis, because somebody that lives down near the water should be able to object to somebody building a house higher than them in front of them. That's all I have to say.
Chuck, can you share? Thank you, Mr. Kudrow. Other members?
Yeah, there's two people that raised hands.
Okay. Mikail, why don't you pick one?
Tracy Everson.
Thank you. Tracy Everson, twenty-three Mill Creek Road. I, I think this is a very interesting discussion. To Fred's point about what our fire department is capable of is a very valid one in terms of the ladder truck and how high up it could get. In terms of what this would do to neighbors' viewscapes if this is allowed to change and you have some of the houses that have been built on Linden Avenue vastly changed what Linden Avenue looks like today as compared to what it was with, you know, summer houses, which is a lot of what Branford was back in the day. So there's a real concern, I think, about what this would do and what this would allow people to be able to build and what it will, how it will change this town and also the impact on neighborhoods. So I appreciate the discussion. I think there's a lot more that needs to be done to do the fact-checking, as has been pointed out. Thank you.
Chuck, can you share? Thank you, Ms. Everson.
The, the other hand raised is Tony Thompson.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes, hi. I was unaware that they were considering this thing. I would like to say I, I designed most of my homes, probably thirty a year, in the state of floodplain. And it's been an ongoing wrestling match with the limit in Branford, which, by the way, it used to be forty feet. I will say that the land use department in Branford is very, very good. And they've managed these questions that have come up. I'll give an example of why this needs to be looked at. So I designed a home back in two thousand that was in a floodplain. And, you know, it was, it was under height, the allowable height. So that zone changed to a V-zone, so now that's a wave-action zone. And it needs to, so it's a brand-new home, basically, two thousand, needs to be lifted. So if it's lifted the very minimal amount to meet the new requirements and the insurer is making the owner lift the house. He doesn't want to, but we will. Lifting that house, it will put it over the limit in that zone of thirty-five feet. It will be closer to thirty-eight or thirty-nine feet to be compliant to the very minimum. We're not gaining any additional habitable space below. This is a requirement. We have to wait, lift the house high enough, put a whole new type of foundation in. It has to be on piers. So there's a regulation in Branford that, that allows an in-kind lift, in-kind meaning if you're only doing this and keeping the house as it is to meet the standards, you don't need to go for a variance. Now, you, you had asked earlier how they handle, the variance board handles height variances. They do not allow height variances at all. They're very strict. They're very good. So this wrestling match in these flood zones and the wave-action zones comes up all the time. I wrestle with it all the time. The town pays very close attention to the standards. John's very good. Jennifer's good. The building officials are very, very good. But I do think one simple correction in these areas, as it used to be, would eliminate about ninety-nine percent of these wrestling matches, and that is to go back to forty feet. There are regulations in, on record with the, the state building code for habitable space. So you can't just have a third floor, the full size of the floors below. It's gotta be, I think, forty percent of habitable space. So you can't automatically add a whole other floor in the residential building code. There are other precautions in place. Again, I probably have done fifteen homes in the last two years in Branford alone, along the waterfront. And what, what's gonna happen if there isn't a little bit of latitude, and I'm glad that they're entertaining this, is people aren't gonna fix houses. They're not gonna buy these houses if they're prohibitive to be repaired. What happens is even the floor joists now for these homes are deeper. They're sixteen inches, eighteen inches, so the floor levels go up. And there's a big investment. Are, are we changing the, the character of the neighborhood? We are. We have no doubt that the houses have to be elevated. Our hands are forced. I'm doing one online with Avenue right now. They bought it for eight hundred thousand dollars and they're spending a million dollars replacing that house. They wanted to remodel it. They can't. So, you know, people ask what the other towns do. Milford allows forty feet. East Haven allows forty feet. And the wrestling matches for this overall height are greatly diminished. I think that, you know, considering where the flood elevation is, the marker, you know, if you have to be four feet above the adjacent ground, ten feet above, would be, like it mentioned in the, in the first section here, I think that needs to be taken into consideration as well. Because I will say, what, what happens is if people don't get what they are investing in, those houses aren't gonna be fixed and they're gonna languish. And what would happen in East Haven is some of those languishing cottages detached and surged and smashed into other houses that were improved nearby. So I, I do think there is a, a happy median, and, and I do think going from thirty-five feet to forty feet would not change the character too much. It used to be forty feet. There's a lot of structures around Branford along the water. They're at forty feet. And if there's any real particular exception, I think it would be on a case-by-case review. I will say, and this includes this board, Branford's pretty good. They don't just let people do whatever they want. They, they scrutinize the plans to every detail. And, you know, I, you, we might not like the answers that we get, but they're usually the right answers and we have to work within the regulations. And again, I think just to put, you know, put it quickly, I think if they just went to forty feet like it used to be, ninety-nine percent of where these issues come up would be eliminated, because it does bog down the process, the average grade calculations, all these other wacky things. It's a pretty complex standard that we have in Branford. And I, I think that might be why it's being proposed, is to kind of reduce the headaches that, that that thirty-five feet allows. We don't like the fact that we have to push these houses up in the air. It's expensive. They, you know, to lift a, a house that used to sit on the sand, it looked really nice, used to walk in the front door, off the beach, blah, blah, that's fine. They, they don't look the same when they're pushed up ten, twelve feet in the air. So I do think that we have to embrace this, the new standard that the water's rising and we have to accommodate them in these neighborhoods. Or I think it's gonna be a mix of, you know, dilapidated, unimproved cottages and shiny new structures. And I, I already see that's what's happened down in the Sunset Beach area. Some of these houses are, are gonna languish because there's just not enough wiggle room to, to qualify the, the investment that it takes to improve those houses properly to the regulations. And then one last thing, if people wonder about the engineering, these structures are fully engineered. In no zones, it's required that they have an engineer stamp on it. So in a V-zone or a floodzone, they're, they're engineered from top to bottom, from the anchors in the foundation to the, the ridge cap. And that's really not a concern. Our, our structures don't fail. The, the requirements are just too heavy-handed. And I've never seen a structure fail from, in the floodzone, ones that were built to current standards. So I, I think that kind of answers itself. That, that's it. I know it'll long-winded, but I, I do a lot of these, a lot. And if there's a lot at stake, prices are twice as much as what they were, you know, three years ago. So I think, you know, we have to entertain the thought that, you know, this raising of the houses is gonna happen, whether we like it or not. And I think that the more that we can accommodate good design, and that doesn't necessarily mean taller buildings, but it does mean accommodations for a, a, a new set of rules. And I think that's what that comes down to.
Chuck, can you share? Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Mikail, is anyone else?
I see no other hands raised.
Chuck?
Yes.
Chuck, Marcy here. I thought Tony made some very interesting points and accurate points, but one thing that didn't get mentioned when you raised the houses is there's really more work that needs to be done to transition between the grade that you're arriving at to the first floor. And if we're building too tight to the setbacks, that becomes problematic and changes, changes things. So, you know, that might be something to consider if we're going to a forty-foot height. Maybe we're making sure that we have a setback, you know, maybe a slightly increased setback to allow for the height or something that can give a little relief to the density of the mass of the structure that is, you know, has to be built to accommodate the, the floodzone.
Yeah, I'll agree. I like to get the stairs inside if possible, because, you know, they are elevated and they're, they're dangerous. And if you can cover them or somehow protect them, or even get them inside, it's certainly a better solution. But that is a good point, that the stairs and the staircases and the landings to accommodate these higher levels do start to creep.
Okay. Any other members of the public? We actually have seven more amendments to give. And, and we are gonna continue this. And people made some great comments, but my, if, if there's no one else from the public, my, my sense is let's go on to the second amendment.
If you, if you wouldn't mind, this is quite like it. I just wanted to say that we actually have not had a storm event to test any of this engineering. We have not have, had a significant storm event since most of these houses have started to get raised up with Sandy and Irene. So we really haven't tested the, the theories that we're building on. And, you know, we, we, we're very hopeful that they're all gonna work and that they're gonna work as designed, but there is no actual test of that so far.
That's true.
Okay. At, at this point, I want to stop the public comment and and we, we're, we're gonna move on. We are continuing the public hearing. So, so, but we got a lot of other items in the agenda. So let's move on now to Mikail. Let's go on to the second amendment.
Yeah, the second amendment pertains to section six point eight in our basic standards. This is the grading special exception that many applications are required to get. They're required to get it less about the amount of grading they're doing and more about the location of the grading being within a hundred feet of a wetland or within twenty-five, or within the coastal management area. That is sort of a, it's basically been something because of how the current section six point eight is written. It essentially eliminates all opportunities to try and take into account exclusions that might exist in the coastal management area regulations or exclusions that exist in the inland wetlands regulations, where it doesn't even require permits from those other set of regulations. But somehow our, how we've written our six point eight regulation, it's requiring the application applicant essentially have those reviews before planning and zoning commission as, as opposed to allowing any of the exclusions that we've written into the section to, to be, I guess, qualified. So the, the change that I have here in is really just adding a simple phrase at the end of the paragraph that talks about exclusions. Right now, it says you can have an exclusion so long as you're not within a hundred feet of a wetland and not within the coastal management area. We're looking to change that to, to sort of clarify. If you're within a hundred feet of the wetlands or if you're within, within the coastal management area and you qualify under the exemptions or exclusions from those regulations, then you would qualify for an exemption under six point eight as well. So hopefully that, the train of thought here is really to try and recognize those other exclusions and not to, you know, if those, if those other regulatory bodies like inland wetlands, if they're not gonna review this activity because it doesn't rise to a level that requires them to review it, I find it hard that six point eight should require that review. Happy to answer questions.
Thank, thank you, Mikail. This is, again, a six point eight. We are, in my experience, we have a, a lot of sort of stray six point eight regs that even though they've been reviewed by the Wetlands Commission or sometimes they, they have to come before us for, it's a grading. Six point eight is the grading earth removal. It's, it's not a regulation of use. It's, it's their earth removal and grading activities. And we, we have a bunch, we have a section that has a whole bunch of exemptions in them. And, but there's an exception to the, to the exemptions. And this is going to be an exception to the, exception to the exemptions. My, so I, I, it, it made sense to me. I, you know, I maybe want to look at the phrasing of it just because once you're talking about an exception to an exception to an exemption, it, I, whatever, we can tinker with the language, but in general, I, I understood what the thoughts were that if wetlands, if they're exempt from wetlands, then we don't, wouldn't necessarily have to review them here. And then there's also some exemptions under coastal area management. So let's start with commission members. Any commission members have any comments about this?
Marcy here. I'm just trying to understand what the exemptions are and that grading could be fill or cut. And really, any activity that's filling or cutting within a hundred year would be reviewed by wetlands. So are you saying if it's deemed acceptable wet, wetlands, then we don't need to do the review? Is that the intent of the?
There's a lot of activities that is, is not being reviewed by wetlands that we're, we're stumbling over and requiring section one point eight just because of the distance. There's a lot of activities in, in people's residential when they're doing what is technically grading, but it, it's really minor. It doesn't exceed the amounts in our exemptions. when they're doing what is technically grading, but it, it's really minor, it doesn't exceed the amounts in our exemptions, which is like five thousand um, square feet. Um, yeah, so all the servants of five thousand square feet. Um, so in theory it would qualify for an exemption. Wellens is not reviewing it. But we have this odd phrasing because of the distance that they're not, they don't qualify for that exemption.
Because it's in the upland review. That's what you're saying.
It's in the upland buffer area.
But it's less than five, yeah.
Only by, by fact of where it's located, but the activity by wetlands consideration is, is not triggering their review.
Yeah, I thought anything within the hundred foot of wetlands had to trigger the review automatically.
There are exemptions, but yeah.
Oh yeah, I'll have to look it up. I, I won't drag it on.
It happens a lot with residential properties where people are really doing something in, um, in their backyard. And they're not, they're not disturbing the entire yard, but they're disturbing a portion within that buffer area. And wellens has determined they don't need to review it and we're determining they need a special exception.
Right, like you're trying to plant a tree because it disturbs and yeah, okay.
Well, one of the exemptions to a wetlands application are uses incidental to the enjoyment or maintenance of residential property. And uh, you know, except if you're actually disturbing the wetlands themselves. Um, so. There's some things.
Yeah. I think I did a, in the survey I did of the zoning code, I, um, it was about a quarter of all special exceptions granted in the, in the past five years were section six point eight, many of which were not even reviewed by wellens.
Other questions, comments from commission members? Hearing none, let's open up.
I, Sharon, I'm here, yeah. Uh, I have a question. Does this, the way the um, regulations are currently um, established, do, does it act like checks and balances? For, so in other words, if, if the wetland, inland wetland commission doesn't get a chance to evaluate it, then the planning and zoning should. So is there like a checks and balance system going on here or is it not useful?
I don't think wetlands, least staff of wetlands still doesn't believe it functions as a checks and balance. They actually find out it, it sort of functions more of, um, you're not allowing wetlands to regulate the wetlands. You're, you're setting in a separate standard that, that it's more strict than wetlands agency.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions, comments from commission members? Hearing none, let's see if any member of the public has any comments on this one? Does any member of the public wish to comment on, on this proposed regulation amendment? Do you see anyone?
I see no hands raised.
Okay. Okay, then it sounds like then let's move on then to uh, the third one. Uh, you want to review that one with us, uh?
Sure.
Is there any chance you can enlarge your screen? It's really hard to read.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
So this next one deals with um,
Perfect.
In, in our regulations, you have a section uh, nine point six point K. And you've, you essentially established um, that the town planner may do certain reviews if they're considered minor modifications to existing site plan reviews or um, and uh, with notification to the, the, the commission. Um, what those minor modifications or what the threshold for minor modification is really not delineated. Uh, so what I, I put together is a list of what you've approved in the past, or at least what the stat, town planner has undertaken. Um, and I want to sort of codify what, what those minor modifications um, would entail. So. And they, they really come down to like changes in lighting often are an issue, um, mostly to swap out different um, components. Uh, minor changes to maybe a layout, shifting a garage from in the driveway from coming in, in one direction to coming in a different direction. Um, again, these are, the intent here is to sort of give clarity so that staff um, are interpreting their regulations correctly.
And I think that's right. You already do have the authority. I think we have this, we approve a site plan.
Chuck, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should stand closer because I'm drifting away.
Thanks.
I think, yeah, we're um, we approve a site plan and you get out in the field, you build something, you say, oh, wait a minute, I need to tweak this or that. Do they have to come back to the commission and do a whole site plan modification? No, in our regulations now, we authorize a town planner to approve minor modifications. And what McKeel says, well, let's define what minor is so it's clear. So, so we know that I'm not overstepping and we know exactly what it is. And so he's delineating that. And that makes some sense. I mean, it's, it's in there now and it makes some sense to clarify that. So uh, I, I didn't have any problem with this one. Other, other comments from commission members about this one?
Uh, Sharon here.
Sharon.
I don't know, maybe I'm overreacting to the um, to this phrase, minor uh, changes in building facades and architectural elements. I can remember the discussion that we had about the cinema property and the original designs that came in for that were really not something that we wanted to see in Branford. And we asked the architects to go back and redo those plans. And a lot of it was the facade and um, architectural elements. So I'm not sure exactly what we mean by minor.
McKeel?
Yeah. Yeah. So the list I have provided that's in the regulation, proposed regulation is essentially a review of what has been deemed minor and approved. Um, my assumption that it was uh, done so in the past with the approval of the commission. Um, so I'm, part of this is transparency. This is how they've been interpreted. Um, I'm new here, so I want to make sure that these, all these interpretations are correct and that you guys are signing off on them. And two, I think there's an opportunity here to sort of codify that. We've, we've entered into a practice. There's been a sort of a standard. Um, let's, let's just take this opportunity and, and make sure that we're clear.
Chuck, Fred Russo. Yes. Uh, uh, this is to Sharon, Sharon. I, I do recall what you're talking about. And I think that the difference is that the uh, the, the approval was already given. When we had the conversations about the different changes outside, that was, I believe, an informational meeting. Nothing had been decided, nothing was formally presented to the commission. I think the applicant came in with a, what a, a, a plan, a potential plan. He said, what do you think? And we said, nah, this doesn't look very good. Go back and redo it. So that was prior to it coming in as a formal application to the, to the commission. So I think when we made those comments, it wasn't where it had been approved by the commission and then the town planner decided, hey, let's change it. I think what happened was the applicant came before saying, look, I'm not really sure what you guys are looking for. And when we said, we don't like the design, they went back and redesigned it. But nothing had been officially approved through the commission. And they did come back and they came with, with a better uh, facade plan than, than they had originally done. And then it went through. So I, so I, I think that the difference here is, is where, where the changes are made. I think the commission makes the, 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 has a final word, but you know, if there's a very small modification, once the uh, uh, the app is, is, is been approved, um, you know, they may, they may change something minor, but it would never be like facade stuff. I, 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 I recall what you're talking about. There was actually two different examples of that where we stepped in. But we stepped in prior to the application being approved. We, we were there for uh, more of an informational meeting rather than a, a formal public hearing. And we gave them our input. They went back, they revised things and they made it better for, I think, the commission to approve it. But that, that was my recollection of that, uh, that thing that you're mentioning.
Okay. Well, thanks Fred. I appreciate the clarification.
Sure.
Marcy here.
Marcy.
I, I think also, you know, the last line, you know, changes that do not expand the scope of the project or alter it. You know, things happen during construction all the time where modifications need to be made and they're, you know, they are minor. And if, if the developers had to come back for every, you know, moving a door and a sidewalk or, you know, or, or things, you know, that would get really laden with um, time on the, on the town staff to, and our time, which we could, I think, be better devoted to bigger applications and the, the course of the, where we want things to go in the town as opposed to whether the door has been moved five feet or something. So.
Thanks, Marcy. Other questions or comments from anyone? Now let's go ahead and open up to the public. Are there any public comments on this proposed amendment? Yes, uh, Mr. Preddy.
I just had a question, Jim Preddy. Um, the lists and the other part of this that uh, McKeel, you keep referring to, is that available somewhere to review?
Uh, it's, it's certainly, it's in the file. Uh, I, I will get this on our Open Gov system. So now you'll have a link on the next agenda so that the public can review it.
Okay. I, I agree. Um, I, I don't think the commission needs to be mired down with minor nonsense that happens during construction, like the utility company putting transformer wherever they feel like it. And you have to move a parking space. It doesn't, um, and, and that stuff happens all the time. And so, um, yeah. Uh, so I was just curious of all of these regulations, if they're available to review.
I, I think Michelle said we have them, but this is just the summary that's the highlighted. You don't have the actual text and you want to see. And, and there is a certain amount of question begging because you know, what a minor change to a building is defined as a minor change to building facades or architectural elements. So defining minor by minor. So whatever. I mean, I, it, it's, there's, that, that inevitably happens, but you know, it, it, there is enough fleshing out uh, that I thought in specificity, AD access driveways, things that are more specified when you actually look at the text. Any other uh, comments from the public? Hearing none then, uh, why don't we go on to the next amendment? This one's a little more significant.
Yeah. So this, this is a, a sort of a new entirely new concept uh, that I'm presenting to the commission. So um, and it's also an effort as opposed to reclassifying a bunch of different uses because I don't think we're there yet, is, is trying to establish a threshold um, that site plan reviews could be handled uh, by staff. And the threshold that I've established in the, um, uh, and it's a little different in, from the, the previous one in that the previous one, there's it, it would always be after the commission makes the approval. I'm trying to set an approve, a, a threshold by which staff, uh, site plan review, which currently is required by the commission to be voted on, to essentially allow certain site plan reviews to be handled by staff. Um, the threshold that I'm looking to, to, or putting out there for discussion is that any structures up to five thousand square feet, um, but requiring less than ten, ten parking spaces. Um, so there's a sort of a two-pronged test there. So if it's five thousand square feet and requires more than ten parking spaces, it would go to the commission. If it's less than five thousand square feet and has less than ten parking spaces, that would be a minor site plan review that the staff could review. And we're just reviewing it to see if it's compliant to the regulations. Um, now, also looking at the same threshold for additions. Um, and then the same thing with accessory structures. Um, again, I'm putting that number out there. That's, that's a threshold that I had in a pre prior community. Um, certainly in talking with other, with other people that, um, I think if you guys are going to consider this, um, I'm completely on board with figuring out what that Branford version of that threshold looks like. Um, it might be half that. It might be much lower than that. It might be four parking spaces. Um, I just like to make sure that we create some threshold. Um, that's a mix of, you know, square footage, which is density and then parking, which is sort of a, um, a, a, a mark, a placeholder for intensity. So.
Okay. Yeah, Chuck Anderson, Chair Will, and I see Peter, you have a hand raised. Let's, let's get some comments from commission members and then we'll, we'll hear, hear your comments, Peter.
Um, how does this relate to residential or is this all commercial uses?
Uh, essentially any site plan, um, any review that requires a site plan automatically requires to come to the commission. Uh, so it would only be those uses that, that, you know, would require a site plan, but do not trigger this threshold would, would be able to be reviewed by staff.
So most residential uses don't come before the commission. Anything you do to your house, in addition to your house.
Other than accessory apartments.
Yeah, that's.
That's a special exception. So those will still come to you.
Right, yeah. And then we have special exceptions for oversized apartments and special exceptions would come.
Okay, I'm just not, yeah, top of mind on what the site plan review.
Yeah, it, it's, it's typically commercial or industrial uses. It could be a commercial industrial building, either a new building or in addition to a building. That's what I think of it as.
So, so new tenants and, new tenants in retail spaces would, that's really what we're, that would, to me, would be a big thing that could be handled, you know, internally.
Right, this, this is more site work, more building, not just a change of use or switching out a tenant. It's, it's a new building on the, on the property. Um, it's in addition to the building. So um, that, that's, I, um, that's what I'm assuming. That the paradigm would be you have a, a retail site or a, you know, office building or, you know, whatever. The, in the commercial industrial use, because that's where site plans are and they're doing in addition. I mean, typically they would come before us and there's typically, we approve them. I, I mean, I think they're, they're, I don't think they've been that controversial. Um, but, but I'm just, it's, it, it is new. Uh, and, and you did it in, it was in Middletown, McKeel, or?
That's correct.
Okay.
The other thing I would add, site plan reviews, the commission's only looking at it from the standpoint, is it compliant with the regulations? There's really not much latitude to say, oh, is this a good project or a bad project?
Right. Yeah, site plans are as of right. I mean, you, you can toy, well, what about the landscaping? I mean, we would do get into that a little bit or the circulation or the dumpster location or the lighting. I mean, there's little things, but typically they're as of right. And for the smaller stuff, I, you know, I don't know to how much that is triggered. So it's an interesting concept and, and the, and the notion would be, you know, let's, it, it, it could potentially be speedier for the public, less costly and get stuff off our agenda if it's not that big. I, I, but it is new. It is definitely new. I'm not, you know, I, you know, for, for Branford at least. And I'd be curious of other places besides Middletown that have done it. Uh, McKeel, I don't, I don't know, you know, uh, and, and uh, you know, what the experience has been.
I would be interested in knowing what types of applications we've seen that this would apply to, you know, were they for physical additions or were they additions because of, you know, you know, overhead doors or, or docks or, you know, things like that nature.
Yeah, I can put together um, a sample of that looks like in the past five years.
And typically what they do is they, and this is, might be as a landscape architect, something I have a little issue with. You know, things will come before and they pull out the original landscape plan, which is so dated or so on a, you know, so not present on the site. And there's sort of a, that's really when we come in and try to reevaluate the landscape. And so, you know, if, if there's enough direction for you to approve that, you know, that it's from a landscape architect or what have you, then, you know, then I, I see it being something that could be feasible. But that would be sort of the one opportunity that might be lost if we're not, you know, unless there's just like, we go back to the landscape, like a better landscape, right?
Thanks. Thanks, Marcy. Do we, before we open up the public, other mem, commission members have any gut reactions to this?
Sure, Fred Russo. Uh, I'm, I'm just wondering, I, I, I in principle have no, no problem with being proposed. I guess the only thing I would. I guess the only thing I would ask is is it possible for the, our planner to maybe, as part of his planner's notes at the end of our, our meeting. At least inform us what, what came before him that, that where the changes were made. So at least the commission is kept in the loop. The, the decision would have been made by the planner, I'm okay with that. But just so that we know what those changes were and, and, and what projects. In, there may not be any for a month or two, and there may be a couple in a month, but I think it might be a good. Practice for just transparency for the commission to know what those changes were. Doesn't have to be a lengthy, you know, report. It would just be application such and such, we did this, 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 and at least we know, so in the event that, that. Comes before us in some other form, we, at least we've been told about it. That would be, I think, it would be a good idea.
I think that would be good.
Thank you.
Great, so note, I was, the thing I was possibly wondering is, would you, what about if you ask in advance? Can I handle this administratively? But that may be just another level that we don't wanna do, but that's, you know, another thought I had. Other fa- uh, comments or reactions from commission members?
Uh, I have a question about Middletown. Are they still doing it? Uh, or are they, uh, at this point in time? And how long has this been going on?
Yeah, they're still doing it, and the practice is. Probably was established in the seventies.
Wow, that's a long time ago.
I think one of the reasons to do it is to allow some of these things to not be held up by scheduling. So if, if Kel has to come in and ask for permission to do the review, they've lost the month. Or at least the two weeks, when he might have been able to just handle it within the week between meetings, we, you know.
On the surface, for me, it sounds like a decent idea, because there are some really minor situations where it puts. It puts a strain on, 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 on the staff, it puts a little bit of a strain on us hearing it. And it, and the applicant, it, it, it causes a delay, causes extra, extra, uh, cost. And, and, and it all, and it's all minor, and we're talking just, you're not saying, you're saying you're just. That they comply with, with the regulations. You're, you're not making a judgment call, you're saying. Just ma- making sure that they comply with the regulations, and if they do, then it basically, it's an automatic, uh, approval. Because they do comply. So something minor like that, I think would be a good, a good start to try maybe on a, I think it might be a good idea, we have to. You know, think about it a little more, but I think it might be a good idea.
Thank you. And Mik- Mikail, I would, you know, if there are other examples, other towns that do it. Middletown, I think of as a bigger town, I mean, you know, population, just whatever, but, you know, maybe a little bit, I, I don't know, I just. It's intriguing. Other thoughts, comments from commission members before we open this one up?
Sharon Hutner here, um, uh, it seems to me that, um, I. I understand the need for efficiency, and I think it really would be a good idea to lessen the load of the. Planning and zoning commission, so I admire the, um, the effort. Um, it just seems to me that 5,000 square feet and 10 parking spaces is large, so. If, if, as Mikail says, this is just a starting point, I would like us to see, to go a little bit smaller. Um, with applications that are not, that don't come before the planning and zoning. The, um, the other thing is I would miss, uh, getting to see the landscaping plans. And so, um, I would just put in a, um, a, a preference for. Maybe still getting to take a look at those, and, um, the other idea is. To maybe start a pilot program, you know, maybe do it for six months. And see how it goes and see what happens, or a year, I don't know. You know, how, what length of time would be appropriate, but we could do it for a short term and. And then reevaluate and see how it has, um, worked or not worked. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Other comments from commission members?
Well, I, I think we can just look and see what the distribution looks like that Marcy asked for. Um, see how this, you know, how, how that pans out across the, the, the universe of possibilities. Um, and, and make a decision based on that. Um, my, my feeling is this and the previous. Uh, amendment are sort of like the bromide on locks. They keep honest people honest. Um, I, I don't see them as being something that will deter. Um, willful, willful or aberrant action on the part of a future, um, administrator. And there, there is nothing we can do about that, but, um. As far as increasing the efficiency and the throughput on a, on a routine basis. Yeah, I, I, I've got no problem with it, we just need to optimize the, uh, square footage and the, the metrics to do this with.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Let's go ahead now and, uh, is here any public comment on this? I see a couple of hands raised.
We've got three, three people who want to comment so far, so.
Okay, who's first?
Um, I saw Peter Henshaw first, and then there's two others, so.
Okay, Peter?
Hi, uh, thanks. Peter Henshaw, uh, 285 Thimble Island Road, um, in Branford. Just one, I, I think this is a great idea to, to do this and, and does lead to some efficiencies, but one thing immediately hit my, hit me when I was. Reading this was that, um, it would seem logical if you do establish a threshold to. Also, um, allow the applicant, if they so desired, to go in front of the commission. I can see there might be a possibility where they, uh, since there is certainly some discretion involved in either. Review by staff or review by the commission, that they might rather have the commission review their proposal. So it's, it would seem to me that if you allow, put that in as a, um, an allowance, that if they, they so wished. They could have it heard in front of the commission, that would be a add to the, the amendment. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. Who's next, Mikail?
Uh, Lauren Brown.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, my name is Lauren Brown, and I'll admit, I don't really understand the details of all of this or the implications and, and. As I said, the details, but I do have a little bit of a concern about transparency in terms of public involvement, and. The reason I'm thinking about this is an application that came in, I think even before COVID, so several of you will remember. Um, that for 250 North Main Street, it was for a special exception, that's the, the property across from the U-Haul, now next to Clancy's. And, um, a significant tree was taken down in the course of that work. And there were several of us that were concerned about that, and we were, and so that would, that would have triggered. The, the requirement for more extensive plantings, if I remember correctly. Um, but we were told that that requirement couldn't be implemented until the. Owners came in for site plan review, which as far as I know, hasn't happened yet. Um, but my point is, if it goes right to the staff, there's no way that the public would ever know and have any chance to comment on it. Whereas if it's, you know, if it's to the commission, we get the notices beforehand.
Sure, sure, uh, tha- thank you, Lauren. Yeah, that, that was a case where. There, there, there was an approval, uh, for a shopping center, which it. Uh, and on the main street, it was for some retail buildings. They, they did a lot of gravel operation and it's for sale now. Uh, and there was a significant tree in the front of the site, that my recollection was, that was, um. It was taken, it was taken down as part of the process. We did require that it be restored. And it never was, but then I, I think the thought was that they're not gonna be able to occupy the site until they do. And they haven't tried to occupy it, they haven't sought a CO, but right now it's up for sale again. But presumably, before the site can be occupied, there will need to be. I think that was, it was in, it's in the conditions of approval, uh, that it needs to be done before. Uh, before the place can be occupied, but, but yeah, this, I don't, I don't see that scenario. The, um, I, I, I suppose that would be a, you know, a tree. I, I guess that could happen anywhere, a tree could be, you know, a significant tree can be removed, and the question was, did they do it illegally? In an administrative, you know, I, I guess that's just something staff would need to be aware of. If there's other site problems going on, they come in for 5,000. Square foot addition, but they've got other issues that where they're in violation, what do you do with that? So, yeah.
I mean, my, my experience is always, I mean, that, that particular project, I remember it, is they were sort of trying to set up pad sites. To be able to sell the, to be able to sell to some other. Commercial operation and they, you know, based on market conditions, it's never happened, but that. Incident with the tree really did a lot because of public input to. You know, get the town and everybody thinking about the, the regulations and how they need to be applied and, you know, what are. You know, what they should be, and I think that's, you know, at least something productive that's coming out from it, but to Lauren's point. You know, is there anything in a minor site plan review relating to landscape of. You know, trees coming down that, you know, they get the, they, they've gotten the approval and, you know, they get into construction and. You know, they have to move something over and it affects a tree, you know, is that something that would become under the purview of the, the town or. You know, obviously, the public has a large interest in, in, in large trees. And, you know, I don't know if there's ways to caveat aspects of the modifications for things that are hot buttons in the town.
I think we're climbing two concepts together here, um, approval and enforcement. The, the aspect of. The text amendment is for approval. Enforcement is an entirely different matter, and the enforcement would have to be enforcement regardless of, but the approval processes. So if, you know, what was approved. Did not include taking down the tree, and the tree was taken down, that's an enforcement matter, and that comes back to us. At some point for, for an opinion.
I think would be if the modification required the taking down of a tree after the approval is, is my point. Not, you know, not a construction accident around a tree or a blatant removal of a tree, but. You know, using the regulation. To get the tree down by coming back later in, in a second. You know, as a, because it's under the threshold, you know, I'm, I mean, that sounds very paranoid, but. You know, the, the concern is, are there situations where trees may be impacted? For, you know, when minor projects are being, you know, minor additions are being added onto a building. You know, I don't know that we've seen that.
Yeah, the, 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 the issue around any minor addition is to what extent. Do we require that they bring the whole site into conformance? And the examples that we've seen, we, is that you, you're, you're doing something little on the site. To, the, the issue where it's come in the past is sidewalks. Remember someone was gonna do a minor revision, we're trying to get sidewalks all around Route One. If, if they're doing a whole new project, no problem, but if they're doing something little, you know, we were always a little hesitant to overload them. You know, sidewalks would be example, but landscaping would be another. What, what if they. You know, how much do they have to bring the site into conformance with the current landscaping regulations if they're doing something minor? Um, or have they complied with the existing, you know, did they do what they said they would do for the existing site plan? And, and then the third one will be lighting, where we typically always do it. We say, sure, you've gotta bring, you gotta fix your lighting up, if they're doing just a minor thing. So, so those, i- in my mind, tho- those kind of, it, it's not as straightforward to say, oh, yeah, it, it, there's a, there's an addition. It complies with the regs, we don't need to waste our time. You kind of get into these a little more discretionary areas, what about other parts of the site? Because they're doing site improvements that they need to bring up and because the regulations are phrased flexibly. We said, to the extent practical, you can bring the site to conformance, what's that mean? And, and we kind of fudge that, I mean, that, that's, you know, we kind of waffle on that, so I. You know, that, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I'd like to give, on the, on the one hand, I wanna authorize, give stuff to the staff, but I wanna make sure they. They have a, they know the policy too, what they do about that, so I don't know.
All right, we have one more hand raised. Um, I know we have to still get to landscaping. Tracy Evans is, has her hand raised.
Tracy.
Hi, thank you. Um, my concern is, um, you know, the definition of minor. What, uh, the town planner may consider minor could be something major for someone who is bordering a site. And moving a driveway or a door or a sidewalk, um, or a tree. Could have a major impact, and I think the Planning and Zoning Commission exists as a public review. And documentation as to what is happening in town and what is being asked, uh, of the town. In terms of site and site development, so I think, um, allowing the discretion of the town planner. Uh, removes a public element that exists by having meetings like this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there other, uh, members of the public wanting to speak?
I see no other hands raised.
Okay, well then, with that case, let's move on to item number, uh, going back to our agenda, which is around here. Item number three, our agenda, that's the landscaping regulation. So why don't we go ahead and get started with that one?
Yep, so. So we did receive a number of comments, I'll be brief, so that we can get the public's reaction. Um, again, same approach here, this is the first opportunity to get this out in front of the commission. Um, you guys have seen variations of it, members, you know, stakeholders in the community have seen it. But we're really looking to get feedback tonight and, uh, take that information and see how we can. Uh, move this proposal, uh, to something that works for the community. Um, this does come out of a lengthy, I guess, multi-year process, um. When I came on board, people asked me to take a look at this and, and put my sort of two cents and my, my version into the ring. Uh, so that's what I'm doing, uh, happy to take any, uh, hits as a result, um. Uh, but what I discovered in conversations is that there's really four elements that I'm, I'm trying to achieve here. Uh, the first and foremost is to sort of limit unnecessary clearing. Uh, I set up sort of a, a, a buffer around which construction may have the site cleared, but. Really, the intent is not to have the entire lot cleared, um, especially if it makes no, is, if it has no relation to the construction. Um, the other is that we establish, you know, thresholds for one-for-one replacement for trees, up to a maximum amount of 30 trees per acre. Uh, and then also to, to require, um, uh, the replacement with native trees and plantings. Uh, and also require in areas that are disturbed that, um, uh, any natives or any invasives. Uh, be, um, you know, removed. Uh, beyond that, I am really looking to sort of, um, understand how this can. More fully reflect sort of the values that we want in the community and create that balance of providing. Uh, clear guidelines so that property owners, developers, um. Can sort of meet or exceed the landscaping requirements that we put on the books. And I, with that, I'll hand it over to the chair.
Thank, thank you, uh, Mikail. Um, I'll try to run through these, I reviewed, there's, we have a lot of public comment on this. Um, I'll give my, try to summarize quickly what I thought. One, I, I like the idea, the limits of clearing, the idea that, you know, that. That one, one way of simply trying to preserve the, the landscaping that's on there by limiting what you can just take away. And you did it by sort of imposing separation distances on buildings, driveways and things like that, and, and it, and it seemed. Interesting and, and good, but then I think, I think it was Peter that made the comment. Well, sometimes sites need to be graded, you know, be, be, you need to, and, and, and you may have to remove a lot more trees. You know, just for the grading element, even if it's more than 50 feet from the building and so forth. So that, that was a interesting point, and, you know, so you have to do some restoration or whatever. Um, the, I, I know the prior draft said 75% native. And this one is 100% native. I, I totally defer to what is appropriate, but I seem to recall sometimes Marcy saying. Or so other, other suggestions that sometimes, well, maybe even though it's not native, it's appropriate, and would we be throwing that out? That would not be allowed here, so would there be any flexibility? And then the kind of third point that, uh. The concern I had, and we tried to build in the last one, is applying this. To residential uses, particularly residential accessory uses, because whether it be accessory apartments, oversized garages or things like that. It's basically a residence, and yet, do they have to put, you know, front landscape, you know, streetscape, stuff in your landscape? That kind of strikes me as incorrect, so I would hope there'd be an exemption. That kind of strikes me as incorrect. So I would hope there'd be an exemption for appropriate residential uses so that it would not, that they would not be subject to this. So those were my quick comments. Others from the commission have comments before we turn it over to get public comments.
Um, sure. I had a, a list of comments and I read uh, remarks by Peter and Shirley this afternoon, email, uh, that's sort of like undercut just about everything I was going to say. So I will, I will, I will let those comments ride with, um, Peter and Shirley. My, my, my observation, uh, that wasn't covered there though, is that in the purpose statement, um, I, I think it's stated backwards. Um, the purpose of the landscaping regulations is to uh, improve the quality of the environment, aesthetic appearance of Branford and enhance the ecological integrity of systems, promote public health and thereby enhancing property values. And, you know, it's, it's, it need, there, there's, there's a hierarchy that just got all scrambled in that, uh, purpose. And to start off with enhanced property values seems like the, the wrong way to do it. Um, editorially, um, yeah, I totally agree on the, the, the maximum limit of disturbance. Um, that is really subject to particulars of the site plan, the logistics plan. Uh, with some of these, I, I cannot understand how you could effectively operate um, safe trenching or spoils handling in terms of making a trench or, you know, just, just normal work on site. I, I think this is kind of, um, arbitrary. And, um, I, I don't think we need it frankly. And aside from a disturbing lack of articles, um, in the general text, um, I would note that there, there's the ref- reference of six-three C six to itself um, is a little, um, uncomfortable. But, um, like I said, there's the substantive comments that, uh, come from Peter and Shirley. I, I was just, you know, happy to see them and they, they took away most of the wind from my, my, my bluster.
Thanks, thanks, Joe. Commission members before we open up the public?
Marcy here.
Marcy.
Uh, thank you Chuck for, for remembering my comments about native trees. I think, you know, everyone can attest that I'm always encouraging native trees, but to, you know, tie the applicants to, to a hundred percent native is, you know, I'm very, very opposed to that. You know, I, I do appreciate Peter's comments about using the landscape architect, even though, you know, engineers can submit plans, you know, that and by statute, I went through a whole statute list when we were doing the landscape regs about, you know, the different areas. It's, it's really something that needs to come from somebody who specializes in the field. And, and I would trust them to determine where natives are appropriate, you know, when you're buffering and it's, you know, anything to the perimeter of the site. I love the idea of natives, you know, but, you know, sometimes you have situations where you're dealing with street trees and it's very difficult to match the habit and growth of a tree to the to the circumstances. So, you know, I, I really think that we shouldn't be tying that down to that great of extent. But, you know, I, I not, I don't want to discourage the use of it. I just think that it's too harsh. And I, and I, you know, and to say fifty percent, seventy percent, you know, again, if it's a good plan, every plan's going to have a different interpretate, you know, have a different scenario, which, you know, which was a lot of what our discussion around the sizing, twelve inch caliper, fifteen, eighteen, should we just make it white? Oaks, you know, it, it, sometimes that's a site by site, you know, scenario. I do think more often than not, large trees aren't picked up on the survey. I would want to encourage that. You know, how you quantify that here, you know, just as like quantifying the sizes to require twelve foot ornamentals be twelve foot, well, not all. Suppose you're doing an ornamental crab apple, that's nearly a mature height for a twelve foot plant. So again, you know, the, sometimes the specificity of the standard prevents the use of some trees or, you know, doesn't always apply. Um, or things aren't available, you know, I would, you know, I mean, I would discourage constantly trying to trim every, you know, border with arborvitae's and a lot of times, you know, they're misused or things are mis-sized for the space. And, and that's, you know, hard to represent here in the regulation. Um, I was confused by the limits of disturbance. I think, you know, every plan that comes in should indicate through the grading, you know, the necessary limits of disturbance relative to the plan, and then that will, will, will drive it. And if it's something that looks excessive to, you know, impacting areas beyond, you know, the, beyond where the construction is, you know, that, that should be something that's picked up. But I think it's, I don't really know how to take what's quantified here and really apply it across the spectrum of every type of, of construction activity. So whereas I'm not opposed to the idea of, of, of its intent, I think some of these things are really hard to quantify and, um, you, you know, I'm, I would ask myself, you know, what's been going wrong with our regulations with the landscape regs? And one of the things that really bothers me is, is that subdivision regulations have no landscape requirement and you see more clear cutting, you know, in these residential circumstances and that bothers me tremendously, you know, and, you know, but, um, you know, I, I just gave it a cursory review. I got on the committee, I give it Peter's comments a cursory review. And I was generally pleased with most things, but those were the few things that kind of jumped out at me at, at first blush.
Thanks, Marcy. Uh, other commission members? Fred?
Chuck, yeah, I, I, uh, I, I, I agree that we should have strong regulations, whether it's landscaping or whatever it is, they should be strong. But I, I want to make sure that we don't have regulations and because we're talking about landscaping, I'll use as the example that doesn't compete with other regulations, you know, if, if, if an applicant comes in with a plan and the landscaping regulations are so strict or, or cost them so much money, it may prevent that person or that, you know, to, to do the development at all. And so I, I, I don't know where the balance is. I'm not a landscape architect, so I'm not going to even attempt to say what we should do. But I, my concern would be that if, if I were a, a developer and I came into town and I had very stringent landscape architects, and I, I, I wouldn't want those uh, regulations to dictate, you know, I mean, listen, there's, there's a certain amount that's going to, but it shouldn't dictate whether or not the developer wants to come onto this property and develop it at all. If, you know, if someone said you have to replace thirty trees, I don't know what the cost is or whatever, it might be, uh, enough and, you know, to, to say, I don't want to do it or, you know, to say that, as it was mentioned, that we have to grade this, we have to take these trees down. We don't want to, but, you know, in order to whatever. Uh, so I, I just, I, I wouldn't want the landscape regulations to dictate and, and kind of lead the pack as to whether a developer wants to come in here or not. I think we need them. I think they need to be balanced and I am not always sure that they are. I think, you know, we have people on both sides that would say there's, there's too strict and others say they're not strict enough. I don't know where that common ground is. But what I would not want to see is that one set of regulations discourages a, a developer from coming into town because that one particular set of regulations is very strict. And so I, I, I just hope that we can work those details out. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Anyone else want to comment before we open up the public?
Can I? Yeah, I mean, Fred makes some good points and it's, you know, people really don't understand what landscape architecture is and they think it's just coming in after the fact and, and putting the right plants in the right place. But, you know, my work and the best part of my work is when I'm involved early on with the engineers, with the developer, you know, assessing the cost, finding the balance with the regulations, with the zone, with the project needs to come with creative solutions. And if, if we're brought in, you know, and I'm pitching my own profession, but if we're brought in early enough in the process, you know, we're having that influence to promote protection of these areas and, and whatnot. And so like, so a, a pet peeve I have of is, you know, I've been asked to plant rain gardens, but I, I haven't been able to determine where they go and people are putting rain gardens in very public visible spaces and then nobody maintains them. And, you know, they're, they're not the neatest looking things, you know, and I, I'm a hundred percent love the idea of a rain garden, but, you know, I think the placement is important, you know, it's landscape is not only for the beautification of a, of a property, but it's also for, you know, can do a lot with filtrating water and, you know, there's a lot of things you can do very naturally with rain guards. And so, you know, I'm not opposed to the idea of it and I think, you know, there's lots of great, but again, it's, you know, where is that placed and where, when is the landscape architect and the designer involved in the process? And, you know, you, you can just tell by looking at a presentation, you know, whether they've been included or not, you know, and that's, you know, I think that was the only thing. There was one other thing, but, you know, I'll chime in if I think of it.
Great.
No, in, in support of Marcy, I mean, the, a landscape architect is very necessary to make the shape and make, make coherence on the exterior space of any project. Um, they do that through plantings, materials. Um, the, the, the entire complexion of the exterior space needs to be considered and it's not just something that you take, you know, a bucket of plants and, you know, hydro seeded to make it, you know, green later. It, it really is a design process and it's very important. But, but to Fred's point, I think it's more important that we have, um, clear and actionable, um, um, legislation, if, if for lack of a better word, on, on how we deal with this stuff. Um, if a developer looks at this and says, oh my God, I got to buy a tree for this job, I'm not going to come in here. Maybe we don't want that developer. Developers will come, quality developers come to places because of the clarity of the development environment and the existing ambiance that they want to participate in. Uh, if you've got an area with a crummy ambiance, maybe we don't want those kind of developers. And we really want to have, you know, we want quality development and they make money, we have good projects.
Thanks. Thank, thanks, Joe. Chuck, into chair. Any, anyone else? I, I want to get to the public. Anyone else, uh, on the commission?
That's, um, Sharon Hutner here.
Sharon.
I don't want to, um, belabor the discussion, um, because, um, Marcy and Joe Chadwick have really expressed how I feel about a lot of this. Um, I just think that this has really been long overdue. And I think that we've had a lot of properties that have not been developed in a very environmentally um, smart way in Branford because we have not passed these regulations. So I agree that we need a landscape professional early in on every project. And I agree with you Chuck, a hundred percent is really not a, um, a doable criteria. Even Doug Tallamy only, um, recommends seventy to seventy-five percent native. So I think we need to be reasonable and I think we need to get these regulations written and done in a reasonable way so that we can pass them, so that we can increase the biodiversity and the, um, and in, and improve the environment in Branford.
Chuck, into chair. Thank you, she. Anyone else? Okay, let's go ahead. Let's go to the public. Uh, McKeel, who's up first?
Yeah, um, uh, Jim Perito.
Jim?
Thank you. Um, Jim Perito, Fifty-Five Aver Place, uh, thank you for this discussion. I just had two points I want you to consider as you go through these, these, uh, these regulations. I think it's important to have them, but I think you should think about maybe incentives. So that if the more that a developer can leave portions of the property un- untouched, ungraded, un-clearcut, then maybe the uh, the flip side of them having to plant more plants is diminished. So there's sort of a quid pro quo there. I also think that you need to think about enforcement. We have a lot of places in town where you've approved some, uh, whether it's a, a site plan, special exception, site plan area, and you've clearly required certain, um, plantings to be made along the borders, in the parking aisles. And after one or two years, they're dead from the plows, jumping the curbs, the snowmac or just, they just have not been taken care of. And so, and I understand that's an enforcement side, but maybe when they're, when they're coming in to do this, there's bonding that covers that and then the town actively, you know, pushes to have that replanted because, um, you can see the difference when there's sites that the plants have been taken care of and actually have grown and you have mature trees and plantings, uh, looks really nice. And those where, for whatever reason, they're not. So that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, into chair. Thank you, Jim. McKeel, who's next?
Uh, Michael Pasquilla.
Mr. Pasquilla?
Uh, good evening, Michael Pasquilla. I'm the Director of Public Health for the East Shore Health District. First, let me say that I want to acknowledge the Planning and Zoning Commissioning for your town of Branford to take this issue on. Working across the state over the course of thirty-three years, um, this is a tough issue and I need to acknowledge it. And on the public health side, when we review septic systems and wells and site plans, sometimes that unfortunately interferes with maybe some of the rules of planning and zoning. And so this issue is a tough issue. You are one of the few, um, in my experience, municipalities even addressing this issue. So kudos to you folks and I want to acknowledge that. Um, in your regulation, I read it and I'm not going to get into the weeds of the individual regulations I'm hearing, just to talk about the public health portion of it, because you mentioned public health and when we talk about native trees, when we talk about native vegetation, biodiversity, ecosystems, groundwater protection, um, what we have seen in the past is some developers do come in and they clear cut. And that is in general, not a good practice. Um, and so with the right planning and zoning, if we want to protect public health, the groundwater, um, you know, when we talk about planetary health and climate change, there's a lot happening. We do need to take into consideration grading, again, septic wells, things like that. Um, but any way we could preserve the lot, um, to the original biodiversity is something we should do. And how you get there and I get, you, you need to talk through this a bit more, maybe, and maybe even, you know, pass something and then revisit it later. But from a public health standpoint, if we could leave the native trees to increase the or maintain the biodiversity, that's really what we need to do. And so, um, I know you, it's a long meeting and I just wanted to say kudos to you folks, but any way you could preserve the native trees, the native vegetation where we're not clear cutting and then bringing invasive species, um, we really don't want to do that. And so, uh, thank you for taking this issue on. In any way we could help as a town department, please let us know.
Thank you. McKeel, who's next?
Um, Jim Preddy?
Hi, good evening. Uh, I usually stay out, Jim Preddy, Chris Callahan Engineering, I usually stay out of these discussions. This one kind of hurts. Um, so a couple of things, the, I mean, the, the tree inventory thing, uh, there's a lot of sites that will, that will probably double the cost of a survey because sometimes to get into where the, you have to measure the trees and locate them, you're hacking through briars and vines and everything with machetes just to get there. Um, so that's something to keep in mind. Um, the limits of disturbance shall not exceed the limits of impervious surface ratio. I don't even know how that's possible. Uh, be honest with you. Uh, but as part of this, is the parking requirement's going to be reduced significantly? Because on commercial sites that were already, I'll say hamstring twelve, fifteen years ago, when they went from seventy-five percent to sixty percent impervious surface, now you're saying that's, you can't even achieve that if you need to have the limits of disturbance the same. Um, I, I, I think that especially in commercial situations, um, I don't know how, you, you know, if there's certain parking requirements, the fire marshal needs you to get around buildings, they want to access the three sides. There's a lot of other requirements that I don't think being able to meet these limits of disturbance that are listed in here are really possible. Um, this is just coming from a guy who puts a lot of these plans together and probably submitted more applications than most people that is group. Um, I'm just trying to think of the nuts and bolts of it. I mean, you know, detention basin could be significantly sized in in, in some cases and not counted as impervious surface, but it would have to be an area that gets cleared to put that in. Um, so that matching the impervious service ratio, I'm not really sure how that works. Um, uh, just, just my thoughts, um, while we're Um, uh, just, just my thoughts, um, while we're still in the planning stages here.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Preddy. Uh, Mikael?
Yep, um, Carla Aizzi.
Hi, everybody. Um, I, I think that the conversation here is going in the right direction. I think a lot of the questions that are being raised are in the correct direction. Uh, without having read the weeds of everything and coming in new to all of this, I would just ask that you give some serious consideration to sight lines when you are doing any regulations related to landscaping, because that is, is one of the things that most of the communities in the state keep struggling with, that when you get a, um, developer coming in and they do, you know, put something to beautify the area, they push it to the, the tail end of their parking lot or the tail end of their driveway, which then impedes the safety of motorists coming in and out. So if you could just make sure that that stays as a consideration of any changes that you might, you might move forward, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Chuck Anderson, thank you.
Peter Henshaw?
Um, hi, uh, thanks very much, uh, Chairman. Um, I had submitted a, a document that, um, Shirley McCarthy and I had, had written up. We, we'd had a chance to review the, um, the latest iteration of, of Mikael's, uh, proposal and just had some comments that I had, uh, put into writing. I think you said that everybody, you'd actually distributed them to everybody? So, and the commissioners all have those? Um, and I, if you want, I can run through them. I can, I can pull up on my screen, side by side, the, um, the proposed draft and our comments to make it easy to compare them if you want. Um, how do you, how would you like to proceed?
How do you?
Be received, we do.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you.
How do you think your, you, you can best, uh, how your message can be most effectively received? If you think it'd be helpful to summarize, we did circulate your memo, so that was helpful. But, uh, if you, um, want to highlight some things, you can certainly put it on the screen and, and go over it. Certainly, we appreciate you're, you're a stakeholder and certainly appreciate all the work you've done in this.
Great, yeah. I'd, I'd like to pull it up. Uh, first, I, I just wanted to say that, um, I do agree with Joe Vayuzo's comments about the, the perp, the initial purpose statement, that, um, it does seem to be backwards in terms of the importance, um, and probably ought to be reversed. And Shirley McCarthy, I think, who's, who's present, did have a comment about adding some phraseology to that, so I'll let her comment on that before we go on. Shirley, do you want to?
Oh, I don't have it in front of me, but I, I think the importance to public health and, um, biologic caring capacity should be further upfront. Because, uh, in the nineteen twenties, when zoning commissions were formed, one of the missions was to protect public health. And I think, uh, uh, regs should be updated based on the latest scientific and medical literature regarding what's good for humans and other living things. Thanks, Peter.
Okay. So if I, can I share my screen?
Yes, I made you a co-host.
Okay. Can, um, can everybody see these side by side?
Yes.
Documents are probably a little bit small, but I'll, I'll just quickly go down through our comments. Um, and they are in no particular order of importance. They just sort of follow the, the proposal itself. Um, so the first thing was that there, there didn't appear to be any requirements for the submission of the actual landscape plan and, and specifications, um, in the, in the reg, which would seem to be important to not only require the plan, obviously, but, um, stipulate specifically what kind of, what the informational content, uh, wasn't, was necessary to be added onto that document. Um, the next comment was that, um, we've talked about this before, but the idea that, um, a landscape architect really ought to be required to be the author of, or at least for larger projects, uh, beyond some, some threshold that could be established. Um, there, there's certainly that, a lot of professional knowledge that, um, is very important to be added, especially at the beginning of, of projects, um, and the development of the plan itself. So having the requirement of having a, a landscape architect would be important. The, um, one of the biggest things, we've already talked about this a, a bit, but the whole, whole idea of the limited of disturbance, the way it's being redefined, uh, in sort of turning it, in my mind, turning it on its head, um, is, is problematic. Um, my initial reading of limited, the, the limits of disturbance as classically, um, understood was that this was the developer's statement about the, the portion of the site that they wish to make an application for and do construction work of various sorts on. And any, and so any application approval would be for what was happening within those limits that, that the applicant defined, and, and nothing could happen outside of that, those limits. But it was a limit that the applicant defined, uh, not one that was prescribed as a limiting boundary. And so by, by, uh, defining the limits of disturbance with a, with a chart and saying that you can't go beyond prescribed limits, um, seems to me prob, problematic, but especially when it's implemented with some of these, um, the, the statements, I'll start with, um, six-three C five, um, to me seems to be impractical. Um, as Jim Preddy said, it, um, if we're limiting the, um, site development to the impervious ratio requirements, uh, stipulated for the site, um, it's essentially, um, negating the original intent of the impervious, impervious surface ratio and extremely limiting the amount of site development that could take place on a site if you applied that and made that the limit, uh, the limiting boundary. Um, again, six-three C six, um, seems to imply that no land disturbing activity can take place in the site and rear yard setbacks, including landscaping, as I'm reading it. Um, for co, commercial development, this seems to be, um, counterproductive. Um, the, obviously, the, the definition of setback itself is the minimum distance, um, from the lot line to the nearest building or stru, or structure. Um, so to also say that, uh, you can't do land development within that area, especially in the side and rear yards, it seems to be, um, again, in, sort of an impractical, um, requirement. Again, going back to six-three C five, um, it seems to reduce the effective amount of, of site development. Uh, formerly, site development could extend to the property lines for the purposes of grading landscaping and other site work exclusive of the building itself. And it would seem to me if you had, for instance, a, a lot in, just envision a, a bill, a commercial lot that was in, in an area that had been fully developed next to, uh, developed commercial sites, and it had gone wild, um, hadn't, hadn't been developed for a while or, or, and had portions of the site had gone wild, especially the boundary areas. If a developer went in, um, and wanted to develop that for a commercial use, it would seem to me that there, there, in many cases, they would want to be able to, um, landscape right up to the boundaries potentially. Whether that would entail taking out significant trees is, is another matter, but they certainly might want to, uh, cl- clean the site up and out, out to the boundaries of the site, um, and not be limited i- in that respect. So, again, that, that seemed to be a, a problematic, um, element of the way this is structured. The, um, there's no, in terms of landscape scre, screening, fencing for certain site features, uh, there, I would think that you would want to put a requirement in there for, uh, screening, especially in commercial areas or industrial areas where you might have, you know, dumpsters, mechanical equipment. Some sites could have large onsite equipment storage areas. And, um, to be able to require that those get adequately screened, um, would seem to be an important element of landscaping. Um, in terms of the requirement to do landscaping, the, the way I'm reading the, the current proposal, it, the, only the front yard portion of the site would be required to be landscaped. Um, and that seems to be, uh, very much de minimis in terms of what happens around the sides of the building and the rear, et cetera, depending on, obviously, on the project design and intent. Um, it would appear that in, in business zones, uh, the, the rear and the side yard, uh, property line landscaping requirement, as it is in the regs now, should, should remain as a, it, a current, currently at a minimum, uh, requirement. Um, there was a requirement that, uh, significant trees, those over twenty, twelve inches in caliper, um, are preserved. This is a great, you know, great, great, uh, requirement to be, um, included. Um, I think the issue is the replacement. It was stipulated that it be on a one-for-one basis, but there was no definition of what one-for-one means, whether it's absolute, whether it means aggregate caliper, or whether it means the aggregate sum cross-section of those, um, of that, that tree. So I think there, it does need to be some, some definition. Um, at a minimum, it should be the aggregate caliper. Um, the protection there, originally, there was some requirement that if existing trees were to remain during construction, that there were requirements for protection around those trees so that they didn't get damaged during construction. Um, and there was, there were limits of encroachment that, of the construction work, um, around the perimeter. That, that should be, I think, built back into the, uh, the regs as a, a requirement. Um, there is reference to ground cover, and there was really no definition of that. I think it needs, needs a definition and the definition should, um, stipulate that, that bark would, wood or stone mulch, uh, would not qualify as a ground cover. Um, I do like the fact that, uh, I think originally in the, in the proposal, the, the ground cover referred to lawn, and that was changed to, to ground cover to allow for, um, a more expansive idea of what, what ground cover could entail. And that's, that's a good change. The, um, parking was the other big area that it did appear that the, the parking requirements are, had been relatively reduced, even from what, um, what the current regs require. And, um, I did put into the comments, I'm not going to read them all, but I did copy the requirements that, uh, you had seen in the earlier proposal a couple of years ago for landscaping modification that, uh, looked at lots of, um, larger lots, lots of sixty or more spaces and lots of five hundred or more spaces for a very large development. And, um, and stipulated some, um, additional landscaping, especially interior islands and interior row divisions, landscape row divisions that might be required. Um, and I, I would hope that in the final reg, you'd, you'd consider, you know, a, a much, much more robust definition of the, um, landscaping requirements for, for parking lots and, uh, the use of end islands, the use of, um, intermediate, um, row islands, et cetera. Um, the only other comment, we did have a comment at the end, the use of, um, in, in six-three K four may require, and in six-three L one intended as a minimum guide. Both of those terms, to me, seem legally problematic, um, in that if you don't have something specific in the regulation and the, the commission asked for something in excess, that, um, depending on what that ask was, that it could, uh, it could lead to issues. So to the extent that you could develop these regs so that they really did fit most of what you would anticipate as your requirements, uh, I think would be, be great. But in general, that, that was the list of comments we had, uh, relative to the, um, the current proposal. Um, and again, I think that the, in terms of a structure, the biggest problem that, that we saw was the whole, uh, limits of disturbance, uh, portion of that and how it was, um, how it was defined, how it was couched and how it was limited. Obviously, we, you do want to put limits on, um, clear cutting and, and disturbance of the site that's not necessary to achieve the goals of the, um, of the project itself. That would be laudable, but, um, you know, the, I think structurally doing it with, with this, um, redefinition of the limits of disturbance does create an awful lot of problems that, uh, I don't see a resolution to. So at any rate, that's, that's the list of our comments to date, and thank you for allowing us to, to chime in on this.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Henshaw.
I have one, uh, more hand raised, Shirley McCarthy.
Yes, Ms. Shirley.
Yeah, I just would like to make a few general comments, and that, um, we need to protect trees. The air quality in Connecticut is getting worse. It's been labeled bad the last few years. We live along I ninety-five, there's a lot of pollution from the west, and trees protect us. If you live on, if you live near trees, your mortality rate is much higher than people that don't. In towns where there aren't a lot of trees, there's an increase of twenty-two percent in the death rate. And you may say, why, why is this? Well, that's because of the silent killer, air pollution, which people don't see and don't know about. But air pollution kills six to seven times more people a year than car accidents, and a hundred times more people a year than terrorism or war. And trees are only protection. Wildfires, smoke, those PM two-point-fives are really toxic. Uh, so, and then native trees are better because they do better with the climate. Their roots somehow interact, and with climate change, a native tree is going to do better. Uh, in the United States, we lose roughly one hundred and seventy-one acres of natural areas and farmland to development every hour. There are a number of scientists that are saying the best luck for our wildlife is our backyards, that we need to plant natives. And Doug Tallamy has shown that if you plant at least seventy percent natives, a population of chickadees can survive. Otherwise, there's not enough native insects to feed the babies and they die. You might like looking at birds. There's actually medical studies that show bird song decrease stress and depression. So I think we have to think about the big picture here, human health, climate change, and, uh, do the right thing by the people in this town. Because if you have, let a developer mow down the, all the trees because it's cheaper, they're not going to live longer. And whose fault will that be?
There have another hand raised. Um, person, Teresa? You have to unmute, unmute yourself.
All right, I got the right, got it off now. Hi, um, first, I just would like to thank Peter and Shirley for all the, the work that they put in to, um, reviewing this. And also, you know, thank you to the commission. This is, I really just heard about this today through a friend who sent it out to me. And, um, as I consider myself a conservationist, and, um, I think this is a really important step to, for the town to be considering. Um, it's, it is complicated, uh, but one of the things that I think needs to really be at the forefront of, of this whole process is that for ecological health and biodiversity and, um, human health, we need to be thinking in terms of connected corridors for our wildlife. And if, whether it's, you know, a larger scale project, a suburban development, um, we really need to look at how can we keep some connected corridors for our wildlife? And, you know, if, if that's, you know, a goal, then we can bring in landscape architectures and, you know, take that, you know, look at that as, how do we do that? In, in relationship to everything else, how do we best do that? How do we keep some wildlife corridors? You know? How do we keep some wildlife corridors, you know, for everyone's well-being? And, and that's really what I, you know, that's my take on this. This is what's very important to me.
Chuck, those are all the comments.
Great, thank you. Teresa, can you just state your first and last name for the record and address?
Sure, Teresa Donovan, 8 Brookwood Drive.
Thank you. And that's it, McKeel?
Yep, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, great. Okay, um, commission member, McKeel, obviously, we said we're gonna, you know, this, we're opening, we're continuing this, these are commission sponsored amendments. That means there's no deadlines, you can keep it open as long as. What, what are you, you know, I, I know you drafted these.
Yeah.
And what, what your thoughts are for going?
Yeah, no, one of the reasons also getting it on the agenda was to, you know, I had done stakeholder meetings over the summer and, and did work with the commission, but this is the opportunity for the public to participate in this process. Got a, a number of emails and correspondence over the past two days, which is really helpful. I need to dig into those and dig into the comments from everyone. And I will look to distilling that and seeing what changes might make sense and present that at the next P and Z commission meeting.
We'll continue both of these items, two and three, the June and June, next meeting, which is.
I can't hear you, Chuck.
Okay, I'm, I wonder, I don't know why I'm not coming out. We'll continue this to our next meeting, which will be when?
November? November 6.
November 6. Okay, so that's item numbers two and three of the agenda. We're going to continue both of those to our November 6 meeting. So we want to thank everyone for their comments, and we'll continue this process on November 6. So then, we'll move on with our agenda, which to item number four, which is Attorney James Perito, agent for the applicant, that's 447, 471 Main Street LLC, 529, 531 Main Street LLC, Main Street LLC owners. This is a special exception to modify and reduce the parking requirements allowed under section 6.5.1, and also to switch the location of required parking from 447, 471 Main Street to 530, 550 Main Street. Is the applicant ready to proceed?
Yes, we are, Mr. Chairman.
You can proceed.
Okay, so again, for the record, James Perito, 55 April Place, I'm an attorney with an office in Halloran Sage at 265 Church Street in New Haven. I represent the applicant and the owners on this. There are three properties involved here. Each property is owned by a separate LLC. Each of those LLCs is primarily owned by Kevin O'Neil, who's with us tonight on the Zoom meeting, and also with us in support is Jim Preddy from Criscolo Engineering. So let me historically give you a little background on these three properties. The first property is 529, 531 Main Street, which has the old auto parts building, it's the big brick building that's right next to the gas station on, on the corner. And that was converted into an office use a number of years ago, I think in 2010. And back then, as part of that conversion, there was a special exception, and we had to provide additional off-site parking. That site itself has five parking spaces and one handicap space. So when that was approved, this commission required that we provide additional parking, which we did, at 447, 471 Main Street, which is the lot to the west, over between the corner building, that's a little, like insurance building, and the Elm Cafe. Most of you probably drive by that lot, nine times out of 10, it's completely empty. I think the only time I've ever seen any parking there is when maybe Patty's Day, there's, you know, some folks overflow from, from the Elm Cafe. So Mr. O'Neil would like to sort of transfer the parking requirement from the 447 lot to a parcel that he now owns through the LLC across the street, which property is 530, 550. 530, 550 Main, across the street, has some retail on the first floor.
Off set.
And two, two one-bedroom apartments upstairs, and it has a, a fairly large parking area alongside. So I'm here, I'm getting some email from someone's, okay, back screen there. So when you approved the special exception for the insurance office at 529, 531, we had a deed restriction on the 447, and that was all done and that's been in place. Mr. O'Neil would like to start to market that piece and neighboring pieces, and in order to do that, he has, you know, nothing hard and fast right now, but he needs to remove that deed restriction. And so when he acquired 530, 550, the thought was to transfer that requirement from 447 to the 530. What's also happened in these 15 or so years is the regulations have changed in terms of parking. You now have the, the downtown business overlay zone, you have the ability to allow shared parking, you know, parking that counts uses for different times, whether it's residential and retail and office and things like that, so that the parking requirements are lessened. So in his, in his staff report, Mr. Wackers, I think, did a very frankly excellent job of sort of running through the requirements that you need to go through for the special exception, and he showed how this particular application meets that. I'm not going to run through all of them, because I think he does a good job there. But I think it's also interesting that in his report, and, and he can bring that up when he speaks to this, he gave a nice little, so snapshots from aerials that showed the parking lot at 447, 471 Main, running from, if I can see the small print, back in 22, 23, 24, and then through 25, showing at different times the, that location and how many cars are parked there. And you can see for yourself, it is rarely used at all. He also took shots of 530, 550 Main Street, also spanning from 2022 up through 2025. And there's, and there's use in that lot, there's no question about it, but it is, from what I can see, rarely full. So our premise is that what we appreciate is to approve the special exceptions, which would be lessening the parking requirement overall for the 529, 531 building, and allowing the parking that was required to be on 447 to be transferred over to 530. We would put, put the deed restriction on the 530, like we had on 437, and then with the commission's approval, we would have, the town would release the restriction on 447. The, the final count, I believe, was to put 18 parking spaces at the 529, 531 Main Street site. I believe one of those is also a handicap spot. What we've really found in terms of the office use at 529 is that it really doesn't require the required number of spaces at all. The five that are on the backside of it are hardly used. The nature of that insurance business, the agents are not physically in the building, especially since COVID, there's not people showing up to the offices anywhere near as much. Across the street at 530, again, with the, the two bedrooms, there's not a big requirement there. And the retail, as Mr. Wackers says in his report, there is more than sufficient parking, we believe, on, on the street, you know, open public parking on both sides of Main Street. I'd be certain, certainly happy to answer any, any questions on this, and we think this is a means of allowing future development over at the 447 parcel, which is now just a, for most, most part, an empty lot, and better utilize, utilize historically the available parking on these lots in accordance with, you know, what, what is happening in that, in that part of town. Be happy to answer any questions.
Chuck Anderson, Mr. Perito. McKeel, do you want to review your staff report?
Yeah, I'll go through it real quick. All right, so I started on an image of the, the two, the three properties in question. The lower right is the property that we placed a, or approved off-site parking to accommodate the highlighted yellow building. There was a requirement that 39 spaces be available for that purpose. The owner wants to modify that previous approval by relocating the parking and reducing the number of spaces required and placing on the lot across the street. Just to reference, so one of the things that we're, we're taking into consideration is there's mixed uses here, which is actually a benefit, especially in our regulations. We want to encourage mixed use of parking, because the three different uses, the office, the retail, and the residential, you can see, don't have peak times that overlap. So we can utilize that, that mix to sort of smooth out the parking that's required as opposed to maximizing each of the individuals by themselves. The aerials that were discussed, the, I took aerials from weekday aerial photos that we have available going back to 2022, and both sites, so the, the site where we have the parking requirement, in 2022 is the one where I saw the most amount of cars, and again, it's not even half full. The site across the street, a bit more usage, but you're really, you're seeing four or five cars typically there. 2024, there was a, a higher volume day, but that's probably pretty typical, and most times you will have sufficient parking. In addition to that, there's just the availability of onsite parking that's actually marked. So there's a number of marked on, on street parking spaces, in addition to the off-site that's available. So that's probably in favor of, of this application as well. The calculations here, the total required that I have is the total amount based on the square footage uses and the bedroom requirement. That does not take into account that the Main Street overlay allows you to essentially eliminate the, the, the five spaces here. So, so you could say it's really 34 that's required if we take into account the Main Street overlay. And there's probably historical use, which is a factor we can take into account for modifications. It really does not warrant 34 spaces. It just, there isn't the man that, that, that's presented based on the evidence. We did send this around to department comments, received. Just a comment from the town engineer, just wanted to make sure that the three property owners were all in favor of this. Obviously, I think there's only one real property owner among the three of them, and there were no other comments from other departments. I went through an assessment of the criteria, it's very lengthy, so I won't go into that. But we do recommend that this, this qualifies for the exception. This is the reason why we have these modifications in our regulations. When you look at a variety of aspects, the mix of uses, the Main Street overlay zone, the historical patterns, I think it feels, makes a very compelling case that the commission should entertain this as well. It also is a benefit that you take a Main Street property and convert it from parking as the primary use to possibly being something different in the future. Parking is not the best main primary use, it's always considered to be accessory, and we want to make sure that we can see other uses therefore. If you pass this, I've drafted a special exception findings. The criteria, conditions I put into place is comply with comments from departments who reviewed, lighting requirements to be shielded, if they upgrade the lighting or any lighting that exists, we want to make sure that his dark sky is compliant and properly shielded. Will need to have the, the proposed parking deed to be reviewed by the town attorney prior to filing, and then just an effective date. So with that, I'll stop sharing and turn it back to the chair.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, McKeel. Questions or comments from commission members before we open it up to the public? Hearing none, then, let's open it up to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment?
Hi, Chuck, it's Steve Kujma again, I do need to comment, so.
Mr. Kujma?
Steve, but, so I, I am in, in the lot they're talking about turning into accessory for across the street, because all the 531, 550, it was very confusing, but I'm in the lot where between the convenience store and the optician, and I'm on the other side with the hairdresser, and I'm the next door. I literally, that, I rely on that lot to provide parking for my senior, because I represent Medicare, Medicare people, my senior people, to be able to get in there, okay? They can't do street parking. So this is a, a big issue for me because, and I understand, I know that Kevin bought the building next door to me, I'm going to eventually buy the building I'm in right now, and I know that right now there's life use of the parking lot. So if you make that a public parking lot for across the street, that totally impedes my people being, be able to park there on a regular basis. So I'm really against the whole situation. I know that Mikhail, Mikhail, I'm sorry, whatever your name is, you did a lot of, little look on this, but you didn't look at me, because this totally impedes my ability to do business here in Bradford. Because I need people that can go and park there, not on the street, but park there and then walk into my building, which is one step. They're seniors, they, a lot of them can't even climb stairs. So it's a lot, this would be a major imposition for me if this was allowed to be an extra lot for across the street. So.
Chuck Anderson, thank, thank you, Mr. Kujma.
Thank you.
McKeel, are there other members of the public who wish to comment?
I don't see any raised hands.
Okay. Mr. Perito, do you, would you like to address the public comments?
Certainly. So between Mr. O'Neil and Mr. DeSiri, who owns the building where Mr. Kujma rents, they have a sort of a license agreement that allows each one of the building uses, both 530 and the building where Mr. Kujma is, to use their, each other's parking lot. So there's a parking lot behind the Mr. DeSiri's building where the barber shop is and the insurance office is, and, and that's right behind that building. My clients' tenants could use that, and Mr. DeSiri's clients can use ours. I mean, it's not, it's not life use, it's a license, and if the, if the barber shop closes or the property gets sold, that use goes away. So it, you know, it's not a deeded use. And I think more importantly, that what's shown on the parking, the parking lot views that you've seen over the past few years, there's never a time where the folks from the insurance building across the street are using the lot at 447. So the, so the act of transferring the, the paper requirement to have X number of spaces available across the street or down the street is really just that. It's a paper requirement. The spaces are never used. The building at 530, which has the optician and the little convenience store, which with the shared, you know, the, the use of the lot is, is never full. There's never a situation there where people can't park. So while I understand Mr. Kujma's concern, I, I don't think it's one that in fact is going to be, is going to be an issue. People just don't use this parking. And while we have these regulations that require a certain number of spaces, what's been point of fact historically here is they're not used, they're not needed. You know, we, we think that the provision of the 18 across the street qualifies under the regulation, is allowed by the special exception, but in point of fact, is not going to be used, any differently than, than the 447 is used now.
Thank you, Mr. Perito. Any other questions or comments from commission members or the public?
I, I just, I just want to say one more time, this would be a big imposition to my business, okay? And I talk to Lou, Mr. DeSiri, all the time, he's my landlord right now. Eventually, I'm going to buy this building from him, and clearly, he's not up to speed to whatever he signed when he bought, when Kevin bought the building next door, because he thinks it's lifetime use forever and will never have to deal with that. Clearly, we're going to have to deal with that somewhere down the road. That will be a major imposition to my business, especially right now, when I have 10 and 12 people at a time coming into my office. I don't, I need to, I need those spaces in that lot for my clients. So, and my, and my employees on top of that. So we can all fit. Yes, there's a great parking lot in the back, it fits three cars, it won't fit more than three cars, it's a struggle to get three cars in there. So I agree, Jim, that, that's great, and they're not using the, the lot across the street, which that was a whole big thing five years ago, or four years ago, or maybe longer, that they wanted to tear down the house so they could put more lot, more, more... that they wanted to tear down the house so they could put more lot, more more seats and more spots in there. This is the same thing, okay? This would be a major imposition to me and my business. Maybe it's temporary to fall, but it's it's not, it's not something that I'm gonna think that's great. And it might eventually, Lou, I'm happy to hear that. I probably won't buy the building if that's the case. But right now, we're in negotiations to do that. And if it hap, if if this is a restriction that's gonna happen, it'll probably ruin everything for that. He's not here. I wish he was because Kevin went to him the other day and said, it doesn't affect you, but really it does. So because he told me that. So I don't know. I don't know what's going on between them. But I know what affects me. And I need as many spaces I can get during my open enrollment period, which is right now, and it goes from October to March. So it's six months out of the year. I need a lot of space. My business grows every day. I need, I need to have access to that lot on a regular basis without any restrictions. I could need ten or twelve spots on a daily basis. And you're right, you look at it right now, it's probably not there. You didn't look at it today because it was packed all day long. So I don't know what the answer is. I just know that this will be a major imposition for me if you use that lot for across the street that doesn't even use it. And they have, and they added, they did add spots to across the street. They they just cut the woman's yard out and they put spots in, which was a great idea. And it worked. And she's no, no smarter or no stupider. She, she's fine with what she's got. So there's there's spots behind her house so for that building. I don't know why they need to open this up to my my lot across the street up to parking there. Obviously, nobody's gonna monitor it. So people can park there all day long. It doesn't matter. But it'll, it'll be an imposition to me.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Kujma. Mr. Paredo, anything else?
I would just reiterate again, you know, it's not, there's not a right to use every space in that area there. There's just not a right like that. And if that was the assumption, well, that was the wrong assumption. That's not, that's not what they have.
Can I speak for a second too? This is Kevin O'Neal, the property owner?
Certainly.
So I did speak with Mr. DiSiro, Steve's landlord, the other day, and he told me I have no issue with it. So, you know, I understand maybe Steve's in negotiations or whatever with, you know, potentially buying the property, but I did speak with the landlord, and he had no issue with it. So nothing else to say.
So then you misled him because he has no idea what this is going, what's going on right now. He has no idea. And when I talk to him tomorrow, he's gonna be a little crazy. So. Because he does not think what you said is not what just happened just now. So.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment? Then I think then we can close this matter as a public hearing, and we'll discuss it and see what we want to do. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Okay, so then our next public hearing item is number five, which is Tom Edwards, architect applicant. This is John J. Anzella, owner, sixty-seven Cedar Street. This is special exception, multifamily residence. Is applicant ready to proceed?
You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm Edwards, Nelson Edwards, architect, Branford. I, if Mikhail could bring up the plan on the, on the screen, that would be wonderful.
Does anyone bring it up?
Yeah, yep. Just give me one second. Okay, let me scroll down here and zoom in.
Okay, so this is on the corner of Cedar Street and Rose. It's currently a two-family residence. It's in a B C zone, which allows multifamily houses, and they want to convert the second floor of this residence into an apartment. The second floor apartment requires two exits. One will be interior out the front door by the parking lot that you see at the bottom of the page. The other one will be through the red outlined landing and staircase. So the site plan review is only to show the staircase on an existing residence that is not being expanded in in any way. All of this is taking place within the existing footprint and the existing volume of the house. So the only addition to the site plan is the staircase. The staircase is behind all setback lines. You can see the dotted line along Rose Street there. So it's it's compliant in that regard. I think, I think everything they're asking for is compliant. The apartment will ultimately require a total of five parking spaces, which are existing and are are shown on the plan at the bottom of the page. There's five there, and there's actually one additional space to the north side of the house where the driveway continues. They park there. So they have six spaces and five are required. And this was reviewed by the Town Center Board a couple of weeks ago, and the plan that you see was approved by them. And I think this, it's about as simple as it gets. So so it's a, by special exception, it's a use that that qualifies in this zone. And that that color plan represents it pretty well. Thank you.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Edwards. Dan, I understood you've done the staff report for this one. Do you want to review it for us?
That's right. Yep, I'll go over it quickly. So, right, sixty-seven Cedar. Right now, it's an existing two-family in the in the B C zone. So they're applying for a special exception to add a third unit on the second floor. So no exterior work besides adding that second egress point, which is that staircase that is outlined there in red, that L-shaped staircase. It's within the setbacks. So we meet the bulk requirements. We sent it out for comments to other departments. And the only comments that were made were provided by the fire marshal. Just saying that any proposed change of occupancy and construction will require a permit application submitted with construction drawings developed by Connecticut Registered Design Professional. And the town engineer just stipulated that during that building department process, it will require additional payment of the sewer district rate for the initial unit. Again, that would be made, that payment will be made during the building permit if this were to be approved. There was a concern about the fence and visibility, but that is not included in part of this application, and it wasn't a hard condition that the town engineer was placing. So these findings together, like I said, there's no external work to be done besides the staircase. The new unit will be completely enclosed within the existing structure. The staircase is just adding that second egress point. It adheres to the special exception requirements in our regulations as well as the basic standards requirements. So these findings lead the staff to recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the special exception with the with the following findings and conditions. Again, the conditions, just mentioning the comments by the fire marshal and the town engineer. Something that was shown on that site plan was that there was a proposed expansion of the driveway, not expanding the parking spots, but just expanding the footprint of the driveway. I I spoke to Tom about that. He said that was not part of this application. It just was on the site plan. So that's just a condition I put in there that a driveway expansion is not permitted as part of this particular approval. Also worth noting that they have, they already have the required amount of parking spaces for the additional unit. And that is all that I have. I'll stop sharing my screen. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Chuck, Chuck Anderson, thank you, Dan. Any questions from commission members before you open it up to the public? Hearing none, then let's open it up to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment? Anyone see anyone? Well, I I don't see anyone. Does the applicant have any further comments, Mr. Edwards?
No, I think it's it's clear. And I think, I know this is a special exception, but if this doesn't fall under your category of minor approvals, I don't know what does. But I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Any further questions or comments from commission members or staff? Hearing none, then we'll close this matter as a public hearing. And this is something I think we can, we will take up in a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you.
And I believe that completes our public hearing items. So why don't we see if we can, what we can do with the ones that we've completed our public hearings on? The first one was our first item, which is Teddy Store LLC. That's one sixty-five, one ninety-five Main Street. Again, that was the, the caretaker's apartment up above, replacing the office use with a caretaker use. And I think we saw the findings and the recommendations for that. I've read the minutes, but I have not, I did not view the the opening public hearing. So I'm going to abstain from voting on this one. But I heard Sharon say that she, she watched that. So Sharon, you're on, I won't off. I'll I'll help facilitate this, but I'm not gonna vote. But does anyone have any comments or thoughts on this, or if someone wants to make a motion? Okay. Okay, so a motion to approve the application by adopting the findings and conditions in the staff report displayed in front of us by McKeel and that he reviewed during the public hearing. That was a motion made by Joe Vayuso to approve with those findings and three conditions. Is there a second?
Chadwick, seconds?
Joe, go ahead.
Okay, well, we'll give the Joe check, Joe Chadwick got the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon's in favor.
So the application is approved. Okay, so we've taken care of that one. That was item number one. The next one, we're obviously not doing anything but the text amendments, is the application for the relocation of the parking. That's four forty-seven, four fifty-one Main Street by Mr. Paredo. And again, you heard the, saw the staff recommendations, you heard the public testimony. The, I think the testimony was that the, we had required this as part of an originally used a number of years ago. Since then, the parking requirements have been decreased. I think the building has like five already in the back, you know, a number of spaces in the back. And then the the request is to remove the, to allow the the parking space across the street to have the additional parking for that that is required to comply with the regulations for this use. And I think the testimony you heard is that they don't really seem to be using that much of the parking anyway, but the regulations require that. And so that it sounded like they probably wouldn't need to use it that often. But, you know, because people aren't there and they have five there already, but they are required to do that, to comply with the regulations. And then we heard from the public, Mr. Kujma, who has a, a business on the site that serves, provides Medicare enhancements in his client bases, the elderly, and they need the parking lot. And his concern was that if they did this, it could possibly squeeze the parking on the site. Although frankly, I I don't remember how many parking spaces are in that parking lot now, McKeel. Do we know?
Eighteen.
There's eighteen.
Seventeen regular, one handicap.
Okay. Okay, so there's eighteen there now. And you saw the the pictures about the usage of the various lots over time. It's, it seemed to be there was some, you know, excess space. So so what do people think? Why don't we go around? Joe Chadwick, thoughts?
It it appears from just on the surface, this should be relatively simple, and the applicant should be entitled to do what they're proposing. From from a standpoint of just, you know, neighborhood coherence, it would be nice to continue this, let them come up with a meeting of minds on how to deal with this between themselves, and we'll come back for an approval next time. That that's, that's my feeling. But from right on the surface, the applicant seems perfectly entitled to do what they're proposing.
Okay, we did close the public hearing. It's not like we kept it open so they could, right? Yeah.
I'm sorry, laps in attention here.
Right. Okay, but but, I mean, we don't have to vote. They could still talk, but but that's, we did close the public hearing. Joe Vayuso?
I feel for the, the Kujman, Mr. Kujman, but he doesn't own the property. And at the same time, this is just a, a paper thing. I I don't think much of it's gonna change. They're not, they're not proposing any new uses, as far as I know. And there's eighteen spaces there. And like Joe says, I mean, the applicant has a right to to do what he's doing. And I think it's more of a, just cleaning up a, a paper trail than than actual changing of use. And the applicant, I think, again, has the right to to do what he's doing. And I feel that, I feel that approval should be, although I feel bad for Mr. Kujman, but he doesn't own the property. And and I don't think he's gonna be affected that much. Because we're not, I don't, they're not proposing anything new. They're just doing, cleaning up some of the loose ends legally.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Fred, any thoughts?
Yes, I I agree with Joe, actually. Well, both Joes, but I I agree with Joe Vayuso when he just said. I think there would be more weight if Mr. Kujma owned the property. He's a tenant, and, you know, he could choose to leave, you know, anytime he wants. If he was the owner of that property, I think we should take that into deeper consideration. But the fact that he's not the owner, for me, I would say, you know, I would agree with the, the property owner. He has a right to do what he wants, as long as it meets the regulations, he does. And the fact that it's a tenant rather than an owner making the case. I I it would have been nice to hear from the owner. If it was that important, I would have, would have assumed or hoped that the tenant and the landlord would have gotten together, together, made some kind of a deal. None of that's happened. It, you know, it's, I I I think the way it was presented was fair and square. And and there may be, may be some difficulty on the part of Mr. Kujma with his, with his clients. But I I think that this is a fair proposal, the way it was presented.
Thanks, thanks, Fred. Marcy, any thoughts?
I'm in general agreement with what what's been said. I mean, I certainly appreciate that his clientele needs first floor entry and needs to be close to the building. You know, and we don't have a lot of locations for him to to accommodate that. But, you know, it it does seem like there's no real impact that's gonna be felt if if there's not a new tenant moving in in the other buildings. It's just more of a paper, you know, a paper kind of situation.
Hey, thanks, Marcy. McKeel, is there, does allowing this parking lot to be used for the parking across the street, does it render it non-conforming? I maybe I can guess who has rights to this parking lot. I mean, does it, does it rendering, does it increase the non-conformity or anything like that? Does or render it, yeah, the the existing site, that Mr. Kujman's site? Does it remember, do they have enough spaces to comply with the regs for them?
Well, Mr. Kujman's is the adjacent property, which is a separate owner entirely outside of this application. That's a, that's a property existing. I've been there for maybe close to a hundred years and was developed prior to zoning, possibly even prior to any parking requirements. So it can continue to exist as is. Obviously, there was some, they called it a license, it sounded like. That's, that's not, that's very different. You know, again, that's sort of good, being a good neighbor and and sharing what you have. But it doesn't give that neighbor the rights necessarily. And it doesn't sound like it's on the deed, or they have any interest in the property. um, where they have any interest in the property. So we're looking at what is required, and that's the office space does require parking. We've required them to have it. And we previously have fulfilled it with off-site parking. And now they're looking to shift that off-site parking somewhere else, uh, and reduce it based on the facts of uh, usage.
Okay. So the, Mr. Kujma's right to use the parking lot. It's not part of, it's not part of the property. And they have a license, my understanding, to use it.
Yes. It's not been represented as an easement or a deed restriction.
Right. And it's not part of any zoning approval, is it, as far as we know? Is that correct?
Unlikely. Uh, I'd have to look at the adjacent property, but, um, uh, my guess is that property is basically functions in that status and in parking, just without any approvals from the planning and zoning commission.
Right. Okay. So it conforms with the regulate, I, I know we got this special permit and the, the special permit is mainly to re, for the reduction in the number, right? For historical, that, that's the one. So it's, okay. And, and it seems they meet the criteria, the historical usage and everything else for that. Then, I mean, that was what you had said. That, that, that was in your report, right?
Correct.
Okay. The reality is, I, I think that they, everyone could be, I think there's eighteen spaces that you, even on a big day, for the Medicare patients with his staff. And I, I'm sure they're not seeing Steven, seeing twelve people at once. I mean, I, I get, you may see twelve people a day, but they're not going to, I'll be parking at the same time. And, uh, I, I have a question as to whether, how much parking the insurance place needs. They've got five there already. And, uh, yeah, I, I've never seen, I walk by there a lot. I've never, I mean, there's occasionally cars in there, but I, I, my, my, my guess is, I, I think there's capacity there for maybe if, even if there is some of the insurance parking that does use, end up using it. That there's still well enough spaces for Mr. Kujma's business. I mean, that's just my familiarity with the neighborhood, but so, and it seems to comply with the regulations. So, and, and Mr. Kujma's right to use it. It's not a deed. It sounds like a license. So, anyway, um, that, so, so it, you know, the bottom line is, I think it appears to comply with the regulations. Yeah. That seems to be the sentiment of the commission members as well. So do you, someone want to make a motion? How many conditions do you have, uh, McKeel? Just so we.
Conditions, there's, uh, four, include the effective date.
Right. Okay. We just want to make sure they're all displayed. Okay. And you're reviewed with this. Does someone, someone making a, a motion with respect to this application? Or I guess, are there any further comments? And if not, does someone want to make a motion with respect to this?
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Okay. Fred's making a motion to approve by adopting the staff findings and recommendations in McKeel's report. Again, that's, I think there's the one finding and the four conditions. So there's a motion made. Is there a second? Someone make a second. A second by Joe, second by Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And the chair is also in favor. So, uh, application's approved. Now we have, uh, two old business applications. So, um, the first one is, uh, six Matthew Pinkney, six Governors Island. Are people?
We still have sixty-seven Cedar.
Oh, I forgot all about that. I'm sorry. Thank you, McKeel. I was just anxious. Um, okay, six, sixty-seven Cedar. Can you pull that one up?
Yes, I'll go right ahead.
We have another hour, Chuck. No problem.
Ah, that's right. Okay, there was, there, there was no public comment on this one. They're putting a staircase in and gone from two to three. It's appropriate area for this. Looks pretty straightforward. Any, any comments from anyone? If not, someone make a motion to, uh, approve the application by adopting the, uh, special exception findings and the three conditions, including A and B there, that are displayed in the staff report.
Chadwick makes that motion.
Motion by Joe Chadwick to approve. Is there a second?
Fred Russo will second that.
Second by Fred. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Chair's also in favor. Now we do have two old business applications, two coastal site plans. Do you want to go forward now or do you want to take a break?
I think they're quick.
Okay. Okay, let's go forward then. Uh, let's, the first one is, uh, Matthew Pinkney, six Governors Island Coastal Site Plan Reconstruction of a Single Family House. Uh, Zapkin, ready to proceed?
Yes, sir.
Go with it.
Jim Preddy, Criscolo Engineering, representing, uh, Mr. Pinkney, six Governors Island. And Fred, I hope to God, I'm not going to take that hour. This is what's going on right now. Uh, back in, I think it was August, there was a mini tornado or some event that happened out there. Took trees out on a number of the islands. You could see a little bit in the corner of this picture, there was a large tree right next to the house that knocked this thing right off of its stilts. It was on, and, and, and I don't, I don't really have great pictures underneath, but it was on some piers. The, the house was built in nineteen fifty, but the tree took, knocked the house right off. Uh, so they're just trying to get back to where they were. Uh, let me stop this so I can share the map. So we immediately went out to the survey. Keeping in mind, all this is predicated that, you know, they're trying to get this work done while the majority of the people are not out on the island, which starts now, pretty much. But this is, this is the survey. Um, there's two cottages that exist on this property. There was actually a very minor, a couple inch encroachment of this corner, and the neighbor shed actually had a minor encroachment the other way. The shed's already gone. The tree was right here. Uh, what they'd like to do is basically put the same cottage back on more or less the same footprint, with the exception, we thought we were just going to move it to get it off the property line, but the, the, um, uh, the building inspector, uh, had other, um, uh, requirements regarding fire codes, current fire codes. So, um, we were moving it about, uh, three and a half feet off the property line. Uh, but same shape, same size, everything. They're, we're going to rebuild it the same way it was, um, with the exception of the distance off the property line. And now because of the flood zone, it will be raised up to meet FEMA compliance. And some additional steps will be required because of the height. But that's it. They're just really just trying to get back to where they were.
Chuck in here, thank you, Mr. Preddy. Uh, Dan, did you do this staff report?
I did. I'll go ahead and, and share here. Uh, oh, yeah, yep. No, all good. Okay. All right, um, we, uh, this is an application for a coastal site plan at six Governors Island. Um, I'm kind of reiterating what was just said. Um, my site plan, I guess, is a, is a slightly out of date, uh, but it doesn't really change my recommendation. Um, they're rebuilding the cottage, um, within more or less the same footprint. Um, the deck there is kind of highlighted in that orange. But the only thing that were included in this application in regard to the deck was just a, a small repair. So it adhered to the bulk requirements, um, and met the, um, our standards for coastal site plan. And we also sent it out to the state. And they found the application to be consistent with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. So there are no issues raised by the state. Uh, we did send it out for comments, uh, for other departments. And the comments that we received, uh, the most substantial ones were from the Eastern, uh, Shore District Health Department. This was in regard to the septic tank that is on the, uh, water side of their property. Um, they stipulated that there should be no increase in design flow of the septic tank and no increase in foundation footprint. Uh, rebuilding of any decks will require additional approvals from the health department. Uh, my understanding is that they're waiting on a, uh, some sort of test from the health department to relocate the septic tank. Um, but their stipulation was that, uh, if they want to come back for any change to the septic tank, they need to file uh, another application with the health department and that no substantial, uh, changes be made to the deck. But, um, pretty straightforward. Um, the staff recommends that the planning and zoning commission approves it with, um, that condition, um, from the health department. And this prior to start of construction, erosion and control measures shall be installed and just the effective date. Uh, if there are any other questions, um, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, any questions, comments from anyone? Looks pretty straightforward. If not, someone want to make a motion to approve the application by adopting the finding of compliance with the Coastal Area Management Act and the three conditions that are in Dan's, uh, staff report that he just displayed to us.
Oh, yeah, I can bring it back up.
Uh, if I could just clarify, the, the reason that the, the comment from the health department about the deck is because the existing system, um, tank and the leaching fields are under that deck and that they've been that way since the beginning. But, um, they, they want to, before they sign off on the deck part, they wanted to prove that there's some up place else on the site that the system could go. That's,
Correct.
That's what the soil test is about.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Preddy. That clarification, someone make a motion?
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Fred makes a motion to approve by adopting the finding and the three conditions in the staff report. Is there a second?
Marcy will second.
Second, Marcy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And chair's also in favor. Thank you, Mr. Preddy.
Thank you.
Brings item number two of old business, which is Robert Carroll, forty-four Linewood Avenue. This is also a coastal site plan, demolition of existing house, and rebuild a new FEMA compliant house. App can ready with, with that?
Uh, yes, I am. Uh, Robert Carroll, thank you, uh, for taking the time to enter, entertain my, uh, application. We had filed, um, for, uh, our variances back in May and were approved. And I was not aware of the fact that we needed a coastal site plan. Uh, so we filed for that. Really what we're doing is just rebuilding the, uh, on the current footprint, um, to make a FEMA compliant home at that address. I don't believe that there's going to be any impact to the beaches, um, or any of the coastal resources. Um, so we had filed that, uh, report and, uh, hope that you agree with us and approve it tonight.
Chuck in here, thank you, Mr. Carroll. Dan, did you prepare the staff report on this one as well?
Yes, I did.
You want to run it through for us?
Absolutely. Okay, um, another coastal site plan application at forty-four Linewood Avenue. It's in the R two zone. We have a view of the site plan here, uh, proposed three-story wood frame building built on existing concrete foundation. They're putting it, um, they're raising it using slabs. It's just north of, uh, Linewood Beach, which is kind of right beneath the site plan here. Um, so it triggered the coastal site plan application. Um, like the applicant mentioned, uh, they received variances already to, uh, allow them to be at this stage. It adheres to the bulk requirements, uh, legal not conforming property, but with the variances. Uh, there's an aerial view of it right there as it stands today. Uh, we sent it out to, uh, deep and they found the application to be consistent with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. They did not raise any issues. The town engineer, uh, noted that they have some revisions to go through with their building application, but nothing that should alter any planning and zoning approval. Um, also noting that any driveway expansion should not be approved. Believing that they're at or near the max width and close to the intersection. The applicant will, uh, is planning to raise it to, uh, FEMA, uh, compliant levels, uh, putting it above the flood zone. These findings, uh, together, uh, knowing that the application, uh, adheres to our coastal site plan requirements and the standard requirements, um, in six point eight. So subject to compliance with the conditions listed below, should let me change this, is not a special exception, so say. Coastal site. So subject to compliance with the conditions listed below, this is our draft finding, uh, just the conditions being that erosion and control measures shall be installed and all comments made by the town engineer shall be complied with, noting that any driveway expansion should not be approved. And then just the effective date of November tenth.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Chuck in here, any questions or comments from any commission members? Hearing none, then it seems fairly straightforward. Does someone want to make a motion to approve the application by adopting the finding and three conditions in, uh, Dan's report?
Chadwick makes that motion.
Motion to approve by Joe Chadwick. Is there a second?
Fred Russo will second.
Second by Fred. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And chair is also in favor. So the application is approved. Uh, you're all set, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You bet. Okay, under new business, we have a coastal site plan that'll be scheduled when it's ready. And I guess that just came in. And then we have the minutes, I think the minutes of our last meeting were sent out, the minutes of October ninth, twenty twenty-five. Um, I was not at that meeting, so I won't be voting, but I don't know if anyone else, others have had a chance to review those and if someone wants to make a motion with respect to those.
Fred Russo will make the motion to accept the minutes of October ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, Fred makes a motion to approve those minutes. Is there a second?
Marcy will second.
Second by Marcy. Sharon, were you here? Are you, you watched the tape or?
Yeah, I watched the tape.
Okay, okay. That's good. Okay. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor? Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And Sharon Hutton?
Sharon's in favor.
Okay. So those minutes are approved. Uh, correspondence, anything, McKeel?
Uh, no, no correspondence, uh, that needs to be communicated this time.
Okay. And planner's report?
Yeah, I, uh, since I did introductions last meeting of Heather Gwinell, she's there. I, I think Chuck and maybe Sharon, uh, you haven't had a chance to meet her, but she's a new Jane Ellis. Two, twenty years of experience of, in construction. And we're lucky to have her. She's, she's jumped in and, um, she'll be managing, um, a lot inspections, complaints shortly. Uh, and if you have any questions for, or, um, have any issues that she can deal with, that, uh, you can reach out to her.
Thanks for making that. Heather?
Heather.
Thank you.
Welcome. Great.
Yes. Hello, Heather. Yes.
Heather. Get out there for us, right?
Yep, speak softly, carry a big stick. That's.
That's right.
And she'll be doing both wetlands and planning compliance?
Correct.
All right. Wetlands and zoning, good for you.
Uh, the only other thing is, um, uh, this next agenda, you're probably, you're going to see links to OpenGov so that you can see, uh, all the application documents associated with it. So we are, this will be our first test case to see how that works for the public as well as the commission. Um, and we'll just be on the lookout and try it out. Let me know if it works or if it doesn't. So you might have to create an account in order to be able to, to log in, but it's, it should be the way we can let everyone see what, uh, the entire application, soup to nuts.
I played with it and it, it wanted me to follow. I played with it and it, it wanted me to file an application. It seemed like that was, I, I didn't want to file, I just wanted to.
McHale?
Yes, Michelle.
Um, I don't know, did you want to bring up the other item or you want to do it the next time at the next DNC meeting?
Oh, is this the, um, the continued, ninety-day continuation for filing a subdivision?
Yeah, the Gould Lane, yes. That, um, it's in the address files if you wanted to, or it's up to you, or talk about it next time.
Do you want to entertain this next time or you want me to try and pull it up real quick?
We'd have to add it to the agenda. It's not on, right?
Right, it came in, uh, late.
Let's add it to the agenda. Uh, they still have stuff to work out with the, the land trust.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll do it next time, right?
Yeah, we'll do it next time, okay.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Again, that's all for me.
Okay.
I have a question. I was watching the videotape and it stopped just as McHale was saying, we are hiring a new, um, environmental.
Environmental associate?
Yeah, and then the tape stopped, so.
Is that after the meeting?
Uh, the, no, the tape stopped right there at that, at that word, assistant. And so I was wondering if there's anything more to be said about.
Yeah, we've hired a new, um, if you remember Katie, um, Lanchet, uh, and she went on to Guilford with the school system there, so we hired, um, s, recent grad, um, and she's, she has environmental background, so she'll be diving in. She probably was on Wetlands Commission tonight. Um, and, uh, yeah, she, this is her, she's not even here a week, so tomorrow will be a week. Um, first job really, I think professionally and, but is eager to get to know the community and to, um, to support our mission.
So what's her title?
Environmental associate. Uh, she was actually up in New Hampshire for five months. Um, uh, doing an America Corps project, like I got cut short. Um, uh, but she also has a lot of GIS experience, so.
So she'll be a consultant to both inland wetlands and planning and zoning?
Yeah, she'll be there as a support for all our projects.
Okay, excellent, great, thank you.
All right.
Anyone else have anything? If not, then does someone make a motion to adjourn?
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Motion adjourned made by Fred, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Marcy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick in favor.
Fred Russo?
In favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And Chair is also in favor, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.